This conference will now be recorded.
All right, do we have everybody? Paul, Dick, Shalane, Arch, Dave, Kevin, myself. All right, we have everybody here. We will get started. All right, notice is hereby given that the La Gobista when agenda items. Senator, please note, we have all of our council members in attendance. And if you would, please join me in the pledge allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the one state
Texas. One and indivisible.
Am I coming through okay? I'm getting a slow internet connection pop up.
Your, your voice is coming in and out from me, Mayor.
All right. Let's see here. We're gonna go dark, sorry. All right. We will start with citizen comments. Obviously, we are speaking on the budget workshop tonight. However, if there's anybody, any citizen that has any comments outside of the agenda, I will recognize you at this time. I see none. We will go to our work session. Our one and only subject, the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget workshop. And I will be turning this over to Tracy. Before I do that, though, I just want to point out that as we go through this budget process, one of the first things you're gonna notice is what affects Senate Bill Two is having on our revenues. And I'm, you know, I'm sure this is gonna be statewide. It'll be reflected in our new tax rate, our, our budget, and just, just pay attention as we, as we're going through here. The limitations that it's kind of putting on us. With that being said, you know, tomorrow at such and such time is our deadline to this date. So in this meeting tonight, if we decide that we want to go above our de minimis rate and have something put on the agenda for voter approval, it has to be decided tonight. If we are gonna stay under our de minimis rate, then we don't have to meet that deadline tomorrow, and we can work on our budget as we normally have in the past. But just note tonight is a deadline for us to decide whether we go above the minimus or not. That is all that I want to say, starting off. And so at this time, I will turn it over to Lady Manager Tracy Lavinca.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the council, can you actually see the screen in which I'm sharing right now? It looks like the presentation. Now, the date does say July 28th. I kept, thank you, Marion, I mean, Councilmember Marion. So the data I have up here is the July 28th, and I thought I would keep that date just because in remembrance of the day that the internet took us down. So our actual date, because we had to regroup, is today, August 2nd. Before I put this PowerPoint on the city website, I will change that date to reflect our date of the actual workshop. The mayor is absolutely correct. We have some decisions that we need to make tonight. They are imperative on how we move forward. And so I have put together a presentation. It is pretty detailed. What it does not do is dive into every single department budget line item. And the reason why we didn't do that is because we have actually created this budget specifically on not going out for voter approval. I will give you a whole lot more information as we go through this, but I'm gonna start with giving some overviews, then we'll start drilling down. Then at the end of this presentation, we will talk about some of those decisions that need to be made, but you need to know where we've been and where we're going before you can make those decisions. So if you will allow me to run through this presentation, and then let me take questions. I'm hoping that quite a bit of the presentation will actually answer most. If not, we will definitely be glad to do so. I do have all the department directors also are joining us, and they will be able to answer any questions that I'm not specifically informed about right now. Please keep in mind, it has been two and a half weeks that I have been here, and I'm pretty proud of the fact that we've been able to make some pretty conscious decisions regarding the budget in such a short amount of time, and you can attribute that to the staff that is here. So I feel comfortable with what we're going to present. And on that note, we will get started. See if this thing's gonna let me get where I need to be. All right, so the city's budget. We build this budget on trying to make sure that we are in alignment with community needs, the council's policy directives, and in conformance with our city charter and the state law. Adopting the proposed budget establishes expenditure limits, as you know, for FY 2021 and 2022. This budget will include also the five-year CIP plan. It will also include several of the things that we have talked about in recent. But we hope that at the end of this, you will recognize that this is keeping in to account the new law for the cap of the 3.5% increase. So finance and city management have worked diligently over several days to ensure that this is what is necessary for any of our funding needs to maintain our operations, our CIP, any of the projects that we have, and that this would be a proposed budget. Having said that, again, there are some decisions that need to be made so that we make sure that we move forward. So this is our financial plan. This is what we are taking some directives from council, and then we will be giving this budget over to the state and making sure that we are complying with all of the laws necessary. So in putting together a budget, we need to talk about some assumptions. And many of you are aware of a lot of these. Some you may not be aware of, but we've got on our expenditure side, we've got some inflationary pressures. And these may come as a surprise and may not. Fuel, obviously, is not a surprise. Ammunition is. So when talking about our officers and qualifying and the tools that they need, ammunition is one of those things that has increased. Building materials, as we know, have increased. Software to provide services or to maintain some of the data that we need to maintain has also gone up, and you can attribute that to COVID because software has become a way of doing business even more frequently than some of the other ways. We have taken our training back to almost pre-COVID. During the COVID, we were doing a lot of conferences online. Some of these conferences are now being held in person, as you know. The Texas Municipal League Conference will be coming up soon, those types of things. So we took that into account as we put this budget together. And then we talked a little bit about the general plan and, and I said the general plan, but the council elections. And that is a cost that we could incur if we have a special election. Our normal election that will take place in November is actually a regular election, and that is divided among all other communities that are having these elections. So we don't have a huge increase. If we were to have a special election, in the past, I've known that to go anywhere between 22,000 and 24,000. So it could be a pretty high cost. I don't think we will have that. I think everything will be on a regular election, but I didn't want to assume. Seeing, so this is the first time council has seen this information. Talking about our revenues. We actually put this budget together with no tax increase and no increase in our fees. Now, that will be significant later as we start talking about what that no tax increase and no fee increase means. We have based this on our local revenue tax. We've adjusted our activities, obviously, to talk about the trends and the forecasting, which goes back to what we think are some assumptions that some of these things will go up. In our general fund, we have the sales tax and we have the ad valorem tax. And in our debt service, we have talked recently about several of these bond opportunities, but right now, we've got general obligation and we've got refunding bonds. And then we've got our enterprise fund. These are our utilities and our streets, and as you know, those are trending higher just because of our house occupancy rising. So all of these things are taken into account as we put a budget together. So it's not just line item. It's actually trying to do a good job at forecasting what may happen over the next 12 months. And as you know, it is a plan, and everything could be subject to change as it did in 19 with COVID. But this is about as good as we can get with our crystal eight ball, and so that is what we have put this budget together with. I would like to talk about some of the highlights, and those highlights have to do with quite a bit of what our O and M process is. Our O and M, our operations and maintenance have to take into account. So these have to do with our general fund had an increase of 1.8 million. Our supplemental requests, and these were supplemental requests that were given by our employees. And I have to give it to finance. They actually wade through these supplemental requests. In the future, we'll be bringing those directly to the council. Unfortunately, we're quick on time this time, so I've kind of truncated this, but I have got some additional information in regards to all of this later. So our supplementals, it was about 604,000 in the general fund and 9.5 in our enterprise and our utility fund as being supplemental requests. We have a capital improvement budget. It's around 4 million. This is all funded, and you will see that in our project sheets when we start talking about that. We have a tentative budget or a proposed budget right now of about 33 million. So that is everything altogether. We do have an opportunity for grants, and that will be a 1.8 million that is coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. That has to be allocated and programmed in the next two years. It does not have to be spent in the next two years. I think that's real important to keep in mind. We will talk a little bit more about that as well. Then we've got some personnel expenses that have been put in this budget. And those are six new full-time employees and two part-time positions. They are in this budget. That does not mean that all of those will actually be funded. But they are in the budget, and we did balance the budget based on best-case scenario where they could have everything. So that will give you a good idea of how well we are with going into that property tax rate discussion. So I wanted to make sure this has everything in the kitchen sink in it, pretty much. And then we can make some good decisions, like I said, with the council when we get down a little bit further. So let's talk about some significant changes that have happened in this budget. I'm going to actually draw a picture for you in just a moment with some graphs, but our grant we just talked about in our revenues, that 1.8, that's pretty significant for us. That is like a cash influx into our budget because of COVID. So that is one of those things that very rarely and few and far between do you ever see. Our enterprise fund with the revenues at 11.6, that is the utility fund at 9.8 million. Our aviation at 366,000, and our golf at 1.3 million. Now, these are just our enterprise or special revenues, and the expenses are on the other side of that. You received all of this in your consolidated report, so this is just taking that information directly from that. And then we've got the general fund. We've got some healthcare costs that I think are important to point out. It is about, I believe that is about 277,000. So one of the things that was a pretty significant change for us is that our healthcare insurance came back extremely high. And so that is an increase of 19.5, and the dental being 9%. Now, having said that, this is based off of also the base rate of our insurance. We did put that in our budget, and we are able to take on that expense. What we have also tried to do is any of that additional increase, instead of passing that on to the employee, we are absorbing it in this budget. The other big indicator is new equipment and new vehicles. We'll talk much more about that. These are either because of new positions or because that there is a replacement that needs to happen with the equipment. Again, all those are still subject to change. That does not mean that we are throwing those into the budget as an approved budget. It does mean they are included in here right now, so there may be some decisions that can be made later if need be. And then the utility fund has new vehicles and new equipment as well. I've, I separated those as general and utility so that you could see the difference in the two different fundings. And then we've got fund transfers, and we've got a budget stabilization reserve, and this is per our financial policies. So we're trying to make sure that we stay within all the documents that we have for the city as well as the state, which sometimes can be a, a task. But it turned out that we've got some good finance people, so that wasn't really hard to do. And please keep in mind, me being new, I am looking at this from new eyes, so it's almost like asking questions and getting clarity, just like you were doing as council. And boy, do we ask a lot of questions. So that is another reason why I feel pretty confident in the information that we're providing. So right now, you are looking at our highlights, and we've talked a little bit about that, the four new positions in our general fund. I have given you specifically what those costs are. And this includes an inspector, their salary, their vehicle, and their equipment. It's 111,000 plus. The legal has a paralegal, which is the salary and the equipment, 81,000. There is one police officer, and it does have a vehicle in there. I just didn't know exactly how much of that vehicle cost, but I will tell you. It is probably around 55,000, but I didn't want to give you an amount because I wasn't able to verify that. And then we have one street's crew leader. We do have in the utility fund, two full-times and two part-times. Keep in mind, two part-times make up one full-time. So when we're doing a positions control, that is, you know, one full-time person, even though it is two part-time people. That is a skater operator, and inspector is a full-time, a customer service rep, and an office assistant. I'm reiterating for all of my staff as well, they are in the budget. That does not mean that they will be approved with the budget, and that doesn't mean that they will stay. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I put this up here because should we need to make some conversations later in the presentation, we can always go back to this slide and make some conscious decisions based on what we know as far as the amounts. So here we can see where our revenues come from and what type they are placed in greater detail. Our general fund is about 36% of the total revenue collected. And then we've got special funds, which parks, aviation, I think we've got some, the hotel occupancy fund. This is about 10% of our revenue. I've got the capital projects, about 9 million, and that's about 24% of revenue. And then we've got the enterprise fund, which is the utility fund, and you can see that that is about 30%. This helps break down where the revenue is going and where we're collecting it and what funds. I think it paints a really good picture for you so that when we start talking about some of the other increases, you've got a good idea of what we're looking at here. And if you're like me, I need visuals sometimes to drive it home, so. That is total anticipated revenues of $39 million, which you'll see that at the very bottom. So I would like to show you in the past five years and give you a sense of comparison between the current budget and the four previous fiscal years. Okay? So we have for the current budget, it's about, and that would be in the FY 2021. That is about a $38.5 million budget. The tentative budget for 2022 is 33 million. And you can see where in the previous years, we, and these were built prior to my getting here, and but you, it shows you a trend of going up and now coming back down. So I hope that this helps when it comes to looking at the budget as a whole, where we are trying to bring some of those ONMs, those expenditures down, and still trying to stay within the cap that the mayor mentioned earlier. So I'm pretty proud of the fact that it's going down, but it also is not holding people to where they cannot get some things done. So they can still be productive, which I think is important. Here is our available resources by type, and I put this so that you can see that this really is talking about percentages. You can tell that the fund balance is the lighter color on the bottom. And then the operating revenues and transfers are on the top so that you can tell that our general fund, our fund balance is 32%, and then our operating is about 68%. And then it switches for the special revenue funds. The fund balance is 68%. Operating and revenues and transfers is 32%. Capital projects, 36 for fund balance and 64 for operating and revenues. And then our enterprise fund, which is 23 of our fund balance and 77 of the operating and maintenance. So it is good to note that we're not spending all of our fund balance in any of these funds, but it's also good to see it relative to what the expenditures are based on about $24 million. So. Here's another way that we can look at this. Instead of percentage-wise, this takes it and really shows you revenues and transfers versus our expenditures. And I think that I do remember a couple of council asking this question prior to this presentation. So I thought this would be helpful for us to actually see our revenues and our expenditures. So you can see it for the general fund. Our expenditures are down in regards to our revenues. And this, this is different from the slide before, which it was talking about our reserves. So this is how our, our expenditures and our revenues are compared. This is the special revenue where revenues are down compared to expenditures. Keep in mind, a lot of those things are aviation, golf, some of those things that have been in the conversation in previous budget years. Capital projects, our revenues are up and our expenditures are down. One of the things that we did with this is try to make sure that whatever is in the CIP is actually funded. So we did not put any unfunded items in your CIP. And then you have an enterprise fund that has the revenues coming in over the expenditures. I know that this is going to be an important conversation when we talk about the fees. So I don't want to get off track here, but this helps you talk about, like I said, special revenues that, that service the hotel occupancy, the parks, and the impact fees. I didn't want to brush over that because sometimes not everybody understands what specifically is in that special revenues when you look at that. And I had to go and do my own research, and thank you to Star for helping me figure out that those are special revenues because I think it's important to be able to see those things. So our general fund revenue by source, I think this is helpful so you understand what actually is coming into our general fund. Here's where we break this down so that you can see that property tax is actually listed in the local taxes. So just because it's not on the screen, it is in that local taxes, which you can see is the highest when it comes to our revenue source. And then we've got the non-departmental, and this has the solid waste fees, our green center, our trash fees. I'm sorry, that's our solid waste. And our non-departmental is comprised of our events. So our Logo Fest, all those things are in that non-departmental. Then our solid waste fees are the things I just spoke of, like our green center, our trash. Our franchise fees, these are actually the electric, the cable, telephone. This is for them to put utilities in our right-of-way. And so we have agreements with them with franchise fees. It's not a lot, but then again, it goes back to, we want to know who's using our right-of-ways. And this helps us have a little bit, even though the, the Public Utility Commission seems to have some, some weight when it comes to franchise and these types of entities, but it does give us a little bit of power when it comes to those franchise fees. Then we've got licenses and permits. Licenses and permits are a lot to do with development services, as you can imagine. And our fines and forfeitures, these have to do with municipal court. If we were putting possibly liens on property, they might go in this area if we were actually getting paid back for any of those liens once a house sells or a property sells. So this is a good depiction of how some of that revenue comes into our general fund. Not everything is our ad valorem tax. So we've got several other things, even though they may not be as big as the ad valorem tax, they are still important to us. And hopefully, at some point, these things will start to increase as we actually get maybe some other infrastructure or we start with the housing market as it grows, it will have an impact on these revenues in the future. I thought this would be helpful for you to see how this kind of lines out on your property tax, and it gives some perspective. And so I did it on a hundred-dollar bill because we actually use $100 as a hundred-dollar per valuation. So when we're looking at what we think the tax rate will be for a home on the taxable value, the hundred is part of the way that we actually figure out that formula. So school district is 47% of the cost on your tax bill. The fire district, and this is ESD 1 and 7, we have both of them that we pay on our tax bill. Both of those are 4%, which brings it to 8%. You've got Travis County, which is 15%, and then the city is 26%. That small little sliver on the far right side is actually the county health, and it is 4%. And it was too small to actually get the wording on the screen. So that puts it into perspective, if nothing else. So I think this is pretty important for you if you need to have a conversation. And it's important for the public to know that not everything is just the city taxes on your tax bill. There are several other entities, and oftentimes, sometimes we get the call that my taxes are going up. It may not actually be the city's property or ad valorem taxes going up. It may be one of these other entities. So it's good to keep that in perspective when you're talking about all the taxes that your residents and the citizens see or may not, depending on if they're looking at their tax bill. So I said that we would talk about the capital improvement projects. There are six in this. There are six in this budget. All six project sheets are the very back of the budget book that you received, or they are the very last six pages on our presentation that we put, our document that we put up on the city website. These, all of these projects, like I spoke to earlier, they are proposed and they are in this budget for this year. Unless that is a conversation that the council would like to have to pull them out. Council would only be approving the first year, which is FY 2122. Just because this is a five-year CIP does not mean that we are actually approving all five years. If however, something has more than one year, it would be good to keep in mind that is going to be the place where we start. When we start putting the CIP together is we're going to look at those things to make sure that we're not halfway finishing a project. So, but for council, that first year, the FY 2122, that is the only year that you will be actually approving in the budget for any implication on the tax rate or our impact fees or any of those other funding sources. We have depicted all the funding sources on your project sheet as well. And those are so you can actually see who is coming in. Sometimes you can have different revenue sources for one project. So it's important that you can be able to see what those different revenue sources are. I believe there's only one that we have, two different funding sources in these six. That's not normal, but it's a good thing that to help, help keep this pretty simple as we go through our CIP. All six include, we've got the street rehabilitation. There are several things in that project sheet that it talks about rehabbing fog ceiling. There are several different things that are going on. So I think it's important to note that the street rehabilitation is a big piece of the CIP. We've got the rest of the grant for Sunset Park. I want to talk a little bit about Sunset Park because you have funding that is already in this year's budget. And I know that there have been some conversations in regards to the park. What we would like to do is come back to the council in this fiscal year and talk about the street and the bathrooms and possibly a piece of playground equipment. The reason why this is important to do in this fiscal year is it doesn't take up funding that is necessary in next fiscal year, and it's already been allocated for this year. And it helps in next fiscal year allow us to get all of the requirements for the Texas Park and Wildlife Grant that we have received. We have to have that money expended to be eligible for the reimbursement by the end of next year. So in order for us to get all those components in according to the grant, we need to be able to do some of the work this year and the rest of the work next year. That has been detailed out in your project worksheet. So you know exactly what that costs and what we're trying to accomplish. The only item that was not in the grant requirement is the road. But after going back and listening to your council conversations of previous meetings, that was one of the two items that came back as a necessary to try to get accomplished. So we are working diligently to get those taken care of and bring those back to the council, which means either later in August or the beginning of September, you will see that. As long as we can start the process, we can fund that project out of this year, which is important. And then we've got the, the second half, you see the requirements. We've also got the Public Works Operations. This is consisting of surveying and doing a site analysis. If you will recall, property was acquired for Public Works Operations on Alfalfa. And before we do anything, we need to figure out exactly what can and cannot be done on that property site now that we've acquired it. So in order to do our due diligence, that is the only allocation or program funds in this actual CIP project. The next is the water line from Barque to Bronco. That is something that is imperative because of the number of houses and the new occupancies that we are taking on. You also have a good detailed worksheet on that as well. We tried to put everything, bless you. We tried to put everything on our project sheets. So you're not looking around for what we're actually trying to accomplish. This will also help when it comes to us setting up the projects and making sure that all of our expenses are going to those projects. This also helps when it comes time to be able to tell council what has been completed. So that we're not running in six different directions and not getting something actually taken care of. The last is the water treatment plant number one, and this is the design phase for expanding the water treatment plant. Now, I know that there has been some conversations around the water treatment plant number three. This, first of all, since it's not in our budget, I don't want us to get off track or off agenda item. We are still doing some research. This is a conversation that we will have later in regards to that. Your CIP is dealing with the water treatment plant number one, and this is just to help with that design phase. So we can have further conversations about water treatment plant number three in the future. I just don't want it to cloud this conversation since it's not a part of the budget, which means it wouldn't be a part of the agenda item. Then, like I said, all of these are on your detailed sheets. So when we start talking about the CIP later in just a couple of minutes, then I want to make sure that we have a chance to actually have conversations, if necessary, about these CIP projects. We chose these projects based on two things. One, what needs to happen before something else takes place, whether it be on the public work side or the street side. It's kind of like you got to put the, you know, the horse before the cart instead of the cart before the horse. So we thought very strategically about these projects. Number two, we thought long and hard about what could actually be funded. So, and that's important because you don't want to start a project that you can't possibly fund throughout the five years. So these are realistic projects that we think can be funded and need to happen before we take on any of those other big expenses in the CIP. That is how we came up with these. I know that there is some other things that may possibly come into play. We can have that conversation about those things and try to see what we can do to work those in because we do have a surplus based on this budget of 1.8 million. So if it's necessary to add a CIP, we can have that discussion. But again, these are decisions we are going to have to make tonight so that staff can A, make sure that the budget works out, and B, that we hit our timeline, which I will give you all the dates in just a moment. I talked a little bit about the American Rescue Plan earlier. I want to make sure that you have the details around this, what we call ARPA. It is something that we have already applied for because there was a deadline of today. We have met that deadline, and I got to give it to Chief Smith. I had the Sergeant Major, myself, Star. We were all trying very diligently, Eric Blay, trying very hard to make sure that we got this applied for before the deadline. Because again, it's 1.8 million that we just don't want to see go bye-bye. The other thing is that it's coming down from the federal government to the state, and then the state gives it to the county to give to us. And if we all don't apply for it, there is a chance that that funding would not come to the state of Texas. And I think we all benefit, whether it's in our community or in a neighboring community that we apply and that we get this funding, because some significant things can take place. Here are some things that you need to know. We are a non-entitlement unit, and that means that A, we are eligible for this funding, but it also means that we are not over 50,000. And it means that we are not getting our funding directly from the federal government. So I talked earlier about it's coming from the federal government, from the state, and then it'll come down to the county. It shouldn't be a long lag time should they start funding those sources. But again, if you happen to hear that an entitled government community got the money before us, it might be because they are over 50,000. Say Austin, and you hear it on the news. Don't panic. We've, we've got some options and some reasons why this wouldn't happen. It is very specific, though, about what you can and cannot use this money for. One of the things is that we could have assistance for our households, small businesses, our nonprofits. We could do that. It has to impact our tourism, travel and hospitality. Some of those may be hard for us to actually figure out how that affected our last year in COVID because the revenues didn't show that. The other thing that we can do is we can actually give a premium pay to any of our essential workers. That premium pay cannot pass a specific threshold, but some of the communities are giving a one-time premium pay to their employees just because they kept the wheels on the track during COVID, and the federal government felt like that was important to them. All, a lot of these did not get a COLA, a cost of living adjustment during that time. And some of them were impacted significantly because they were considered essential. And so they had to do some things outside of their normal regimen, I should say, based on COVID. So that's why the federal government put this in. It also allows us to do any extra funding for if we saw a reduction in what they are calling revenue collection for emergency needs. And I say that because it gives that provision that it's the reduction in revenue for public health emergency relative to your revenue collection. I don't think that we actually saw any of that. We don't have any of our big hospitals. We've got a couple of small clinics, but that's not going to be something that we can actually show a big relevance toward. So it would be hard to put that as an eligible project. The big one is the last, make necessary investments to water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. That's a big deal because we do have a 1.8 million investment in our water and sewer with that water treatment plant number one expansion. This would be a strong eligible project. And again, this would be something that it didn't come out of our revenue sources other than the fact that we are eligible because of the federal funding that they are giving. Streets is not a eligible project. I will tell you that they are working right now, the federal government, with the 2022 Infrastructure Plan. They have put streets as a part of that infrastructure plan. I know that several of the senators were looking for earmarks. That was prior to me getting here. So it'll be interesting to see how that actually comes out next year, but it could play a significant part in some of the CIP in next year's conversations. So we will be keeping our ear to the grindstone to see what happens with that. What you cannot use this funding for is you cannot pay into the pension fund. And I made sure that I put that in there because I know that we are trying to figure out some cost in our pension as to possibly going up on what our retirement rate from 6% to 7%. This money cannot be used for that, and they were very specific about that. Some of the other states have a pension where they have unfunded liability. And so the federal government was specific, specific about that money not going for those purposes. So what they really want to do is not only are they trying to get that money to the communities, like the local governments, they want that money to turn around and go back into the economy to actually assist with infrastructure because now you're, you're actually calling for projects, you're getting contracts. So part of the whole reason for this influx in this federal spending relief fund is to get money back out into the economy. So that's why I also think that this is probably one of our strongest eligibility projects is that one CIP project. Here is the pink elephant in the room. It is the property tax rate. So I've already talked about staff building the budget based on no new revenue rate. That is that .6070. In order to put this in perspective for you, I think it's important that you see I put in FY 20 and FY 21. The current right now tax rate is .6475. We base this budget, including all those new positions, equipment, CIP projects, based on a rate of .6070. I think that is huge considering the fact that I know several have had a conversation with me about lowering the property tax. We've had a couple of things happen since we have had some initial conversations. One is we actually worked at putting together all these rates because as you know, the county was not very quick to give us the rates. And so finance and myself were kind of running around with our hair on fire last week when we were going to possibly have this meeting because we didn't have the exact numbers. This will speak volumes to Star and the way she does finance, and I do have to give her props. She could not get those numbers from the county. She actually did the calculations herself. I think she did them about four times. She got the calculations. Then we got the county's numbers. We thought her calculations were off because the county gave us numbers. A day later, the day after, we were to have our workshop meeting. So we would have been giving you the wrong information based on what the county was giving us. The county came back, their numbers were almost identical to Star's when she did the calculation without knowing what the numbers are. Star, it's funny, she will not give herself 110% credit for being correct because she said she was off a little because she rounded up. Having said that, I'm going with Star's numbers every single time from this point forward because this is not the first, this is the second year that she's been right, and the county has given us wrong numbers. So that's not to say that the county didn't get us the correct numbers. It's to say that Star doing the calculation is probably our best measure as to check and make sure that the county gives us good numbers. And so I'm next year, if I'm not going to sweat it, if we don't have the numbers from the county yet, I can base the budget based on her because she's pretty close. So we have a de minimis rate. It's that 6389. Then we've got a no new revenue rate, which is .6070. You have a voter approval rate of .6135. I've already told you that staff has based this budget and developed it on a no new revenue rate. What you need to know at this point is we can fall in between that no new revenue rate and we can go all the way up to the voter approval rate of 6135. And it will not enact a voter approval on the ballot. So I want to say that again so everybody can understand that. Based on what the new schedule is and what the new House bill is, we can go between that no new revenue rate of .6070 up to and include .6135. At .6136, it triggers a voter approval rate that goes to the ballot. Does that make sense? Everybody, okay. And, and that's important for you to know as we move on and have some discussions next. I'm a little worried. I'm a little worried, Councilman Weatherly has his calculator out, so he's going to be checking all the numbers. All right. I just talked to you about, I've taken that graph, that table, and I've put in front of you specifically what is for this year. And this is what council needs to give us good direction on. So the possible. Who is Tracy?
Yeah, I lost audio. Did she freeze up?
I don't hear anything either. Because I heard you, though, Kevin.
Okay, good. At least somebody's hearing somebody.
Tracy, can you hear us?
Tracy, I can't hear her either. Yeah, she's, she froze up or something.
Just heard you laugh, Tracy.
I know. I'm like, all of a sudden, everybody left at the same time. I'm going to try not to take that personal. I mean, I know, I know, unless you really like numbers, I know this is boring and a little tedious, but I was like, where did everybody go?
We're here. We can hear you, but we can't see.
A little frightening. A little frightening. Okay, well, everybody left. I left. The gremlins are in rare fashion tonight.
That's that, that's like technical jinx you've been talking about ever since your presentation.
I know. I know. I was, I was telling the mayor, does anybody recall that when I was giving my presentation during the interview, we had the terrible thunderstorm and the whole PowerPoint went out? And we had to kind of shift and be flexible every since then. Then the internet went out the night we were supposed to have this meeting. Now this happens. Gremlins. They're going away. All right. I don't know how much before you fell off the grid. So I was talking about the difference between that no new revenue and our approval rate. It is only point zero zero six five. I thought you would want to know. And before I have to ask Councilman Weatherly to actually do the math for me, I did it for you. So we get this, so remember I was talking about that hundred dollar bill? If you have a hundred thousand taxable value home, you divide that by a hundred. If you times that, times that difference. So if you decided to go from no new revenue actually up to the approval rate, it is six dollars and fifty cents based on every one thousand taxable value of a home. So if it are three thousand taxable value, that's six point five three times is what that would be based on as an increase in the taxable value, increase of revenue. That is important as you start to decide, are we staying at no new revenue? Or are we going to go up to the six point, to the point six one three five? Keeping in mind, the current tax rate is point six four seven five. So no matter what, this is a reduction in the property tax levy. The above approval rate, as we talked about, is the point six one three six, one one hundredths of a point above, up to the six three eight nine. Now here's where it gets interesting. And we have been trying to make sure that the language says exactly what we think it says, and we are confident at this point. Even if we went between and up to the six three eight nine, it does not automatically put an election out there. It could initiate a voter petition, though. So even though it does not initiate a, a automatic election, there could be a petition where three percent of the voters, of the registered voters, say they want it on the ballot if it's in between that six one three six and that six three eight nine. And then that would go to the ballot to be voted on by the voters. It's a real hinky. It doesn't come into play if we don't go above that six one three five. But instead of making that decision for you, I want you to have all the information so you can make a very, a very good detailed decision based on this information. That petition would need to be within ninety days of the September twenty-third date. That will make sense when we get ready to talk about these dates. So I, I tell you all that to say, this information is very imperative, and we can continue to go back to this slide, but I was trying to make sure you have all the information based on what could or could not happen with that property tax rate.
May, may I make a statement?
Yes.
All right. So one thing that's not on that slide that I think council should know, that point zero zero six five cents difference, based on the total taxable value of all of our properties, would be about an increase of revenue around seventy-five to eighty thousand for the city. So you see what it does to the property owners. But just so you know, that difference is about seventy-five to eighty thousand for us in revenue. So it's not a big increase in revenue.
Very good point, Mayor. Thank you. So I wanted to talk about some. Yes, sir?
The one number I didn't see on here is going from our current tax rate to the point six zero seven. How much of a decrease is that in our total revenues?
It, well, here's the thing. It's not a decrease because we were already three point five percent of an increase over. So I can tell you what the difference is. I can get that information to you. But it really isn't a, it's a decrease in the property tax levy. But as far as our revenues, our revenues came in over that. If we take in, we're going to go over that three point five. So this actually gets us where we need to be instead of continually going over. You bring up a really good point, Councilman Weatherly. If you are not aware, and I apologize if you're hearing the background noise because it means that either rain or the AC has come on. So the reason why they put this cap in effect is because you had rare situations, not like Lago Vista, where we are actually getting new growth. You had situations where you had very established communities, cities, that had already built out. But because the property tax continued to increase year after year, you had people that had been living in their houses for twenty years that were having to actually sell their homes because they can no longer afford it because of the property tax. So it's a strange dichotomy that is happening here. So they put this into effect based on those things, not based on what happens when you've got the Marble Falls and the Lago Vista, and some of these other communities around us that are starting to see the housing boom. So it really has another impact to us because we have infrastructure that's being strained, and we need some things to take place, like new employees to take on some of that new growth. So it really, it becomes a real puzzle to put these things together, not so much for those that are already built out because they have a pretty set as to what their revenue would be. It keeps them from growing. People are starting to go in and out. I see you, Councilman Prince.
Can, can you hear me, Tracy? I just turned my camera. Responding to Mr. Weatherly, my understanding is the current proposal actually is an increase in total ad valorem revenue. If I look at last year's, if I look at last year's budget, between what paid into debt service and what went into general fund, there was almost exactly seven million dollars in ad valorem tax last year's budget. This budget has about seven point five million in ad valorem tax. So even at that reduced rate, we're still up total taxes in the, in the budget by almost a half million dollars.
That's what I was asking.
And I am trying to find where I can actually point that out to you on your consolidated.
Yeah, it's a little complicated because part of the ad valorem is going into debt service and part of it's going into the general fund. So you have to look at both of those places in both years in order to see the total. And I just happened to have looked at that, so I knew the answer.
I love it when somebody can give a good answer, too. So. All right, before all Hades breaks loose, because I hear the rain really coming now. Let's get us past this. All right, so here are some other considerations for us. And the reason why I say these are other considerations is due to the fact that when I got here, staff had done a beautiful job at trying to put together supplementals. Not having somebody in this seat over several months while the budget should have been kind of moving its way across. There are some things that possibly need to be added into this budget. That is another place where I need direction from the council as to yes, no, let, you know, try to figure this out kind of thing because we've got to get this figured out as in tonight. One of the things was a cost of living adjustment. We did not have a COLA in this budget. Please keep in mind that in the past, they've done a cost of living and a merit. The reason why I did not put a merit in for the possible consideration that everything is the cost of living is you've got situations where the merit is based on an evaluation. What happens when you have a supervisor that may not be in a, in a situation of being able to give an evaluation based on the events just because some things have transpired? We don't then give a certain amount of merit to that individual during the evaluation because they may have had a recent event that may skew the evaluation of the employee. That's not to say that our supervisors would do that. It's to say we need to keep into account that that is, that is a part of being a human. Want to know the truth. Sometimes it tends to creep in when you didn't see it. Cost of living is based on a couple of things. A CPI index, which is a consumer pricing index. The consumer pricing index for Travis County, believe it or not, is a little over one percent. This, the cost of living, the COLA that the social security is putting into play is six percent. You take those, and that is why I've asked for a budget number on three percent. That is not to say that that is by any means what we have put in because none of these are in the budget as of now. So that would be about a two hundred and nine thousand dollar additional expenditure for this budget. The other thing is we have had an opportunity when our health insurance came back. They came back to us with this rare opportunity. Take our accident death and dismemberment from ten thousand, which every employee has, up it to twenty thousand, and the only additional cost is three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. That's a pretty big benefit to our employees with a nominal expense in our budget. But that is not in here, so I have put it on this for consideration slide. Next are these new employees and new equipment. That is in our budget. I have said it more than once tonight. But I think you need to know how that plays into this budget. I've already said all of these will not be funded. So you need to know what that looks like, though, for each of the funding sources. General fund, it's about six hundred and ninety-two thousand. That is those four employees that I talked about earlier. Utility fund is about seven hundred and ninety thousand. That is for the employees, the two full-time, the two part-times, and all of the equipment that was in that fund. Then it comes to a total of one point five million approximately. So having said that we will not be funding all of these things as far as positions and equipment, some of that is, is going, that one point five is not the final number that we will be putting in this budget. I want you to keep that in mind as you decide what that proposed tax rate needs to be. Right now, all that one point five is already in the budget. That one point five million is already built into the budget. One of the only things that is built in on this slide. The compensation studies. So I was, I've been talking to several of our employees and to some of the council when I've had conversations. We have a, we have a situation where we have a very lean staff. Believe it or not, considering the fact that we have house growth and we've got occupancy growth, we have a lean staff to get things done. What is happening right now because we are not in the market for salaries is we've got this thing called compression happening. So I've got a brand-new employee that may come in. They may be hired at a salary higher than I have an employee that is in a relatively similar position who's been here eight years. So now I've got somebody that has institutional knowledge and who has every reason to just be working up through the chain of increases. And they're still nowhere near the current because we're paying for these new employees around what the market is. So now you've got somebody who's brand-new that is now higher than somebody that has been here. You can imagine how that can affect a department's morale and employees' opinion. It's not an easy fix, and it's not one that I would want to do without a compensation study. A compensation study takes into account everything, not just salary. We are very generous on our benefits. It takes into account the benefits, and it takes into account the salary. So it would actually give us data on both. It is very hard for me to start moving around salaries when we don't have that data. Now this comes with a caveat. If we do a compensation study, it means we have every intent to try to look at what comes out of that study in regards to either bringing the employees up to market, putting them somewhere in the middle of that. So we don't know what that data is. We don't know what that number is. But the only way we will know it is if we do a compensation study. Otherwise, the longer we wait, the further out of market we get. That is about fifty to sixty thousand. I have not had any direct proposals. I am basing this off of the compensation study that I did about four years ago with about a twenty percent increase. Keep in mind, we have half the employee positions. So this could be a high number. You just never know with the market these days. So this is my magic eight ball on what I think that cost is. A new website. I've heard from several. I'm hoping that Dave doesn't freak out on me. A new website. I've had lots and lots and lots of people tell me either it's hard to work through our website or it's hard to get the amount of information that we would need necessary. Now, that doesn't mean that it is. I know from my past experience that we could really utilize our website in many, many ways. Right now, we're not utilizing it in certain ways, but many of the staff and the council have articulated to me that they would really like to see our website being more functional for everybody. And so if that were a cost that you are looking at, I have recently done lots and lots of demos and quotes, and for our size, it would be around forty thousand. Now, this is design, implementation, them. for our size, it would be around 40,000. Now, this is design, implementation, them taking all of our data that's already on our website and moving it over instead of having staff time to do that. So, you've got three requests from outside entities. Keep Lago Vista beautiful. You normally, as a council, have funded them for 5,000. They are requesting an increase up to 15,000. So it would be a $10,000 increase. They are maintaining several of the beds, as you know, some of the beds out at the golf course, some of the beds in, you've seen at the corner of Dawn and Lumen Ford. They assist with ours out here in front of and around City Hall. They are doing the, I call it the roundabout, they call it the triangle, down at the end of Dawn. They are a force to be reckoned with, for sure, but they have made this request. You've got Cox Springs School Renovation Society. Those of you that weren't able to make the chamber luncheon, we actually heard from the historic group that is making this request. They did not give us any specific dollar amount. This request is for the old school building that they're trying to renovate that actually started in Lago Vista. I believe they are moving it now and have moved it to another location, but this is directly in response to that. We normally do anywhere between 2,000 and 6,000 when it comes to these types of requests. From what I'm being told, they were asking for no specifics, so I, it really depends on what you, as the council, would like to do in regards to that. And then we had a request for our Dark Skies Association, and they're requesting $2,000. All of these items are going to be for your consideration, and I will go back to this slide to have that conversation here in just a moment. I just want to make sure that we get past everything that we need to in this presentation. Having said all that, we now have to keep in mind, we have some serious dates, so I wanted to stress how important it is for us to get through this conversation tonight. These are all the dates.
Tracy, can I ask you something?
Yes.
On the, on the, on the screen before this, go back one. So you said the 1.5, the 1.5 is in the budget already. Go back one, go forward one slide. I want the other, yeah, you said the 1.5 is in the budget already?
Yes.
So the rest of the items that are on this sheet total up to $333,000?
Yes.
Just, okay.
And you have a $1.8 million surplus.
Okay.
Based on a .6070, no increase tax rate.
Yeah. I just wanted to know how much money, I wanted to add up all of those and just have an idea of what was not in the budget. It came to about 333,000.
And that's if you funded all of these?
At the, at the current rate that you have on this sheet, yes.
Did you have an amount at all for the Cox Springs School?
I used 2,000, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't have any other numbers, so I just used the 2,000 for the Cox Springs School.
That is a really good point. It doesn't seem like it's a huge expense when it comes to when you look at what is being asked right now. I think several of these go far beyond this fiscal year, as in a return on your investment.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. So let's talk about these key date. Oh, I see. Council Prince, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just turned my microphone on. That was very observant of you. Just a quick one. In past years, I know there's been, I know of at least one other case where the city made small donations to local organizations. There may be others I don't know about. The one I know about is Hill Country Singers, and I know of that just because I'm an active member of that, and I put together the thank you note. So I don't know if there are other city civic organizations, and this, to me, would fit in the category of, you know, KLVB is, I think, worthy of a much bigger number, but Hill Country Singers, and maybe there's some people that are doing other art kinds of things, the Cox School. I wonder whether, I would just make this suggestion, that we could probably just table it to come back to, but I wonder whether we want to have sort of an overall budget for local civic donations, and then let, let city staff kind of deal with the recommendations rather than, than council saying, let's do, you know, 1,000 for this, and 3,000 for that, and 8,000. But if we can just kind of give you a number, whether it's 5,000 or 15,000 or whatever it is, and then, and then let the city staff kind of dole it out appropriately.
I appreciate that suggestion, because it is kind of hard to accommodate if they didn't put in this request, and you would hate to exclude somebody just based on the fact that they may not have known of this deadline. We only went and put those items, who they actually gave us the formal request, because I felt like we were doing them some due diligence. So I appreciate, I think that's a really good way to handle this. And we can, we can have that conversation as we're talking about these other considerations. Yes, ma'am?
Tracy, I would make mention that the, all of the nonprofits that have requested money in previous years, I did go ahead and budget those at the same dollars. So Hill Country Singers, the Players, all of those groups that we normally request, that normally do request, they are included in this budget.
Ah, fantastic. Thank you, Star.
You're welcome.
Council Marion, I think you were, I don't want to take that away from you. Mayor Protim, I'm not sure if you can see everybody.
Council Marion?
Okay, thank you. I actually just wanted to voice support for what Counselor Prince just recommended. I think that's an excellent suggestion, actually. I did see the list of organizations noted in the budget as Star just mentioned, but it might be a really good idea to just give a fixed dollar amount there that kind of stays the same, and then, as he mentioned, maybe allow, you know, maybe then we have staff figure out who to disperse those funds to and how much. I think that's an excellent suggestion, because I suspect that as the community grows, you're going to have more and more nonprofits that will be requesting funds, and the coffers are not infinite. So, there is a limit to what we, what we could and should, I suspect, put in there.
You are correct.
May I?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, I was going to answer to Counselor Prince's comment. There are others, Lago Vista Players, usually the chamber, but Star already covered that. I want to throw out something for council and staff to consider. Up until recently, COVID kind of do a kink in it, but the way it used to happen is in July, all these groups, all these nonprofits would actually come to council and give a presentation on their request for funding and what they wanted to use it for. And it was, it was, it was very interesting, the things that they brought to us, and I think we should get back to doing that next fiscal year and have all these groups present to council. That's it.
And if I might, I was going to follow up. Is that all right? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. The mayor is spot on. I kind of hear where Counselor Prince and Marion are coming from, but I would just caution, having some lump, some amount that is then divvied up by staff, if we, if we have these groups come before us at council, it's something that's done in the open, in front of God and everybody, and everybody gets to hear who's asking for what, and this is a discussion between council and these organizations as far as the decisions that are being made, who to give money to. I would just caution that if all of a sudden we give some big lump sum, and then it's done behind the scenes by staff, not in the open, at council meeting, that you'll end up with people saying, oh, I didn't get what I was supposed to, and it's a shady deal behind scenes. So I would just caution doing it other than the way we've done it in the past, as the mayor just described. And then, I did have one question. Is the intent, and I know you asked us to hold all our questions to the end, but are we going to go back to the previous slide to kind of debate through the items that you had listed there, to give you direction as far as what, oh, I see you nodding your head. So, okay, I'll shut up, let you continue. Thank you.
Nope, I want you to do it all from memory. Yes, we are going to go back to those slides, because I need some specifics. It may seem like I am being elementary to this, but I want to make sure that there's a consensus, A, from the council, and B, that we are making good notes as to what we are going to do in regards to this. So yes, we will go back to those slides and make some decisions so that you can have your conversations about those specific things. So, and this is my last slide. So, we're almost there. And almost in record time. Key dates, this is important for you. So, tonight is our budget workshop. Tomorrow, if necessary, we could have another budget workshop. I think that is very obvious that you have taken the time and you have looked through this budget. I think that you can make some good decisions tonight based on what you know, and it could be possible that tomorrow night's meeting may not be necessary. Having said that, it is because we have to get information published in a timely manner. On August 6th, this is to submit the no revenue and voter approval rates to council and post the rates and debt information on our website and provide it to the county. So that is why these meetings have been so close. So we have got to get this information on August 6th to the county. August 27th is our last day to file the proposed budget. All of this is based on council not going over the voter approval. So you're staying between that .6070 and that .6135. This timeline is based on that assumption from us, considering the feedback that I had received from council members. If that is not the case, this timeline is different if we're going out for voter approval. That, August 30th is our first day to publish the notice for our public hearing based on the budget. September 17th is the last day to publish the public hearing. September 22nd, we would vote on the proposed tax rate and post notice of that tax rate on our website, only if the rate exceeds the no new revenue and below voter approval rate. September 24th is the last day to publish the notice of the tax rate hearing. Last day to do the public hearing would be the 28th. Last day to adopt would be September 29th. Obviously, we don't want to go to the last day, but that is the last day, because September 30th is the last in the fiscal year, and October 1 starts a new budget. So, those dates are important for you as you make some decisions. I am, and I know I'm optimistic, but I am assuming that we picked the right date, time schedule, because I, based on what I know, it sounds like we're pretty close to having some, some things at least narrowed down when it comes to the tax rate. Any questions about these dates? I don't see anybody. Okay. So let me go back to our previous slide. This is the slide that I think is the most important for council right now. Based on what you know about the other considerations, and that approximately 330,000 that is not in the budget right now. Based on the fact that you know that we built this budget pretty healthy with all of those 1.5 million equipment and those employees, on that .6070, I need to know a consensus from the council where you want this tax rate to be. Do you want to keep it at 6.070? Up to that .6135, again, no voter election would be initiated? Or are you looking to go to that 6136, going over that voter approval, which means we switch to a different timeline? So that is, like I said, the pink elephant in the room. That is the big question. All of the CIPs are in this. All of the other things are in this, except for those additional other considerations. So, let me start with the first big one, and I want to go back to our CIP projects and make sure that if anybody has any questions based on the projects that we have proposed, if there is anything that you see that needs to change, I want to make sure I get a consensus on our CIP, because it is a large part of the budget. I think I saw Counselor Marion's hand first.
Thank you, Tracy. I actually have a clarifying question, a quick question. So, in thinking about those six SIP projects, and thinking back to the comment you made earlier about water treatment plant one expansion, really what we're deciding right now is amounts, right? So like, let's just say that later, we wanted to change that from treatment plant one to treatment plant three. Is that going to be an issue? Does it have to be treatment plant one, or is it really the amount that just has to stay consistent and logistics, such as which treatment plant could possibly change, should we decide that that's the direction we want to go?
Very good question. This CIP project is based specifically on water treatment plant one. If we were to think that we were going to do another, like water treatment plant three, this whole project, the timeline, the expenses, would all change. So this amount of 625,000 is based on water treatment one, plant one, based on getting it from, where is that now, to the 5.5 million gallons per day, adding that trident units, increasing the pipe size. So all of that is specific to water treatment, treatment plant number one. Counselor Prince?
Yeah, not following up on Ms. Marion's comments. I am not at all comfortable with approving a WTP one project at this point. I think that the justification in my mind is, is not clear enough. I have many, many questions, and the report that I've seen seems to me to have some, some pretty significant bias towards the answer. And so I'm not there. I'm absolutely not ready to approve a project for plant one at this point. Maybe the right answer, but I think we've got to have a lot more discussion before we approve that.
If we don't approve this project, we will be taking that 625,000 that is budgeted in that FY 2021, that is coming out of the water impact fees, that would just stay in the water impact fees based on the discussion. So in other words, that project would go on a later date, but it would not be included for this budget approval. So I just want, I want to make sure that we all understand that, so that we can make sure that we get a balanced budget.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. And, and I personally believe we need to make a major investment in either plant number one or plant number three. I'm just not convinced yet that plant number one is the right decision.
Exactly. That's where I'm at.
I'm going to echo that as well. The writer of that plan that just came back, that it seems to be biased, they're the ones that built three and sold us a bill of goods, quite frankly. they're the ones that built three and sold us a bill of goods, quite frankly, in my opinion. So we need some very serious questions answered before we approve any more money moving forward in either direction.
I want to make sure I have a consensus. Counselor Weatherly?
I'm keeping my microphone turned off because every time I turn it on, my picture goes away. The only comment I would have is that the bill of goods that we got on water plant three was from the engineer and design, not necessarily from the contractors that built it. And I think they've learned their lesson too. The big difference in what you've really got to look at is the distribution of the water. When you're talking about distribution from water plant three, you're talking about going all the way from the south end of town, all the way up to the north. And although we are having quite a bit of build in Old Lago in the south end of town, where we're looking at for the future is more up the hill and up to the north of town, that and to the west of town. And water plant three is the furthest place you could possibly put the water plant to get away from those locations. You not only have to think about the production of the water, you've got to think about the pumping and the moving of the water. And we're still in the process of trying to figure out how to integrate the two water systems together where we can cover the whole town if one plant goes out. Right now, we can't do that. Of the two plants, the location of water plant one has more potential to be able to meet the needs of the whole city than water plant three. It's more centrally located. It's much further up the hill, much further toward the north end of town, and therefore is going to be less cost in what's going to be required to move that water. So before you totally disregard the plan for water plant one, you need to think about where it is and where water plant three is and what's involved with moving that water. Because that's going to be a big consideration, and it's going to be a huge, huge cost if everything has to come out of water plant three.
If I can follow up, please. Mr. Weatherly, HGR and Walker Partners worked hand in hand when we had water treatment plant three built. And at the time that water treatment plant three was built, Tassera was already approved. We knew that it was going to be a growth spot for us, okay? Yet they still told us that was the plant that we would enhance in the future to provide additional capacity for the city, and that they designed it in such a way and built in such a way so that it was easily and less expensively expanded. And now that it's coming time for us to do that, all of a sudden, they're changing their tune. And I just think that we, as a council, need to spend some time and discuss this and have them come talk to us and explain to us why they advised us the way they did back in 2013 and 14 before we go handing them more money. That's just my, again, my humble opinion.
Well, I definitely think that we need to have more information. But I, the thing I, the only thing I want to say is you really need to look at how far that water's got to move and what's going to be involved to try to get water from water plant three. But my biggest thing is, why did we put water plant three down at the end of the city when we knew that we were going to have to pump water up the side of the hill?
Again, that's all stuff they should have advised us on when they told us to build that and how to build it.
Yeah, I think it should have been a better plan. I think it should have been different. But we've got what we've got. So when we start looking at whether to work on water plant three or water plant one, we really need to think about how far that water's got to go.
Mayor Protem, you, you looked like you had your hand up.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I, I see both sides that are being presented here. My idea is that the older water treatment plant number one, I think in the earliest studies that we, or not studies, but earliest discussions that we had on the water, the water rate study, we determined more or less that the functionality of those two water plants were such that that water treatment plant number one was operating at about half of its capacity as opposed to water treatment plant number three. So given that the, the major growth that is occurring in the near future is going to be at lakeside, requiring us to move more water to the, to the north and west of us, I think that kind of gives the, gives me the opinion that we should probably focus on doing whatever we need to do to improve water treatment plant number one. It is the older one. It is not producing possibly, is incapable of delivering the amount of water that water treatment plant three is capable. I think it needs to, to be upgraded. And I think that's the direction that we should be considering.
Counselor Williams, I know that you had.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think one, we're, we're in a time for delivering on our budget. And I do think we need more information before we begin the project on plant number one. But I think we need to budget money aside so that when they come and talk to us about what they specifically think needs to happen with plant number one, the money is already set aside. This is just a plan. This is our budget. It doesn't mean that we have to approve it once they come, but we need to budget appropriately in the timeframe that we have to have that set aside. That, that's my thought. You know, we don't have to necessarily approve it and say it's going to be completed without further discussion, but I don't think we're going to get the answers we need between now and tomorrow. And something does need to happen with water plant number one, but what, what that specifically is going to entail, you don't know yet.
Counselor Marion? It's like I waited until you had to cough to call on me. My apologies.
That's all right. Thank you. I, I think just two things for me. One, I'm not completely convinced that the growth, the biggest growth we're going to see in the future is lakesided to Sarah. We have a whole lot of growth happening down in this side of, of Lago Vista. We've got Firefly getting ready to go in with a whole bunch of units over the next couple of years. We've got Braun Homes, which is a big builder down on this side of town. There's a PDD coming before council on, on Thursday with 600 units. I'm not convinced that Tassera, the building in Tassera is going to outpace the building in the rest of, of town. So that's point number one for me. And point number two, I thought I heard you say that if we approve this, that means that we can't change it to treatment plant three later. And it just seems to me like what most of us are saying is that we need more information before we can agree to deciding whether or not we need to expand treatment plant one or treatment plant three first. Don't know that anybody is disagreeing that at some point we're going to probably have to expand both, but I just don't know that we have the information we need in order to make an intelligent, educated decision as to which of those it should be first.
I completely understand where everybody is coming from. And I did say that if we don't approve this, this is the project in the CIP. So when you approve the CIP, we're approving the project. So to Counsel Williams' comment, if this is not the one that we are going to approve, we can do some, I'm going to call it massaging of this project to still keep funding in it based on a decision which one you are looking to do. So I want to make sure that we're going to fund a project if necessary for this CIP project, not throw it completely out. I'm hearing that there is an easiness with the information that we have right now and that we need more information. So we've got two choices. We either massage this project to be able to have that flexibility right now, or we decide that this is not going to be in our CIP. So when you adopt your budget and you adopt the CIP, this one would not be included. So, not like I'm trying to make things more complicated for you. I just want everybody to understand why these decisions are having to be made so that we can, we can build this budget accordingly. Because I don't want to come back to you and say, well, we have, we've had to change this. And in case nobody knows it yet, I'm not a fan of budget amendments, and I'm certainly not a fan of telling you that a cost is going to be incurred, and then it is drastically different than what it should be. So we're trying to be very specific about these types of things. Counselor Sullivan, I did see your hand up, and then I saw Counselor Prince after.
And Mayor Tidwell's got his hand up too, so.
Oh, I can't see him.
Oh, sorry. He, he's had his hand up for a while.
My apologies. I have to scroll, mayor.
Do what? He's had his hand up longer. Why don't we let Mayor go first and then I'll go after him? Fair?
All right. Thank you. So, my question, I think it was, you've already kind of addressed it. My, my question was basically on this budget and budget amendments, whether we do treatment plant one or treatment plant three, we, I don't, we can't make that decision in the next day. However, I do think we need to have, we need to keep something in the budget so that when we do get to that point, we, we will have that funding set aside. Now, whether we call it treatment plant one or treatment plant three, or can we put, you know, some other heading on there, like just water treatment plant expansion and not put a one or a three in there? I, I think we still need to keep a certain amount earmarked in this budget under that CIP. And, and when we do get to the discussion part of it, I, I know people have brought up the reports and stuff from engineers and stuff, but I would really like to hear from our staff, the people that are working and dealing with this on a daily basis, you know, what their thoughts are as far as need. I think they, between development services with Roy and his department, seeing what's for, what the forecast is, seeing the usage and things at our plants in, in his department, I would really like to hear from staff on what direction they think we should take as opposed to necessarily what an engineering firm says we need to do. So those are my thoughts. Whichever way we want to go, I still think we need something in the CIP, in this budget to make sure we have funding. That's it.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for not being able to see you.
I saw his hand real big, and I want to make sure he got called on. So, Ms. Levine, my question is, is I, I like the idea of having a project there dedicated in the CIP, but, but I dislike the idea of having it dedicated to water treatment plant one expansion. So I guess my question is, is can we, you talked about massaging things and so forth. Can we be a little bit more flexible with that particular project in the CIP and dedicate a certain amount of money upfront that we're going to use to analyze the situation, look at what we've done in the past, why the promise of, of treatment plant three isn't coming to fruition, you know, potentially, and then make a decision of what makes the most sense, and then spend the rest of the money on whichever direction we decide makes the most sense. To me, and, and I guess the last question I'd ask is, is that it doesn't seem to me that this particular issue is a go-no-go decision for tonight. Tonight, I believe the only decision we have to make is, are we going to stay below the no new revenue or below that .6135 or whatever? And regardless, if we make that decision, we're going to stay below it, we still are going to have money in there. There's some reverb there. We're still going to have money in there to potentially move forward with this project. So, so I guess what I'm saying is, we don't have to solve treatment plant one, treatment plant two tonight. I think all I, as a council member, want to know is that that money's going to be flexible so that we're going to spend it on the appropriate path, whichever the appropriate path ends up being.
You bring up some very good points. So there are some yeses and some no's in some of those things that you brought up. One is, yes, we can massage this in a way that the project title, the project description all try to encompass the evaluation of both of those water treatment plants instead of narrowing it down to one. The reason why I say that, that we can massage this and the description has to be changed, when you adopt this budget, you're adopting based on what we think we're going to actually get accomplished in regards to our CIP. So we want to be careful that we're not so flexible that we are not communicating to staff and the public what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Having said that, do I need a hard and fast on, is this a no-no-go? Yes and no. I need to know that you still want to keep this in the CIP, whether or not, because it does impact funding throughout the rest of this budget. Based on what you know about it being in the CIP right now, and you know that that .6070 has accommodated for this, means that you feel comfortable that we could keep this as a CIP, is the consensus that I'm hearing, changing the direction in which this project actually has project description based on what we know right now tonight. That way, we don't scrap it and put something else. So I'm trying to get clarity on these six. In the event you have something else that we left out that you think is more important and you want to add to it, it would be relative for the conversation. So do I have to have a hard and fast on it tonight? Probably not. What I need to know is that there's not something else that we've left out other than these six that you want to include in the CIP that would have an effect on whether or not we're keeping this one in, our CIP.
Okay. Well, I'll give you my impression. I, I'm in favor of leaving it in as long as it's flexible and allows us to analyze the situation and then move forward with the appropriate expansion, whether it be one or three. Let me see, the mayor has his thumb up.
That seems to be my consensus. If council would, we're not voting. Let me be real clear. We're not voting. I'm trying to get a consensus. If this isn't the direction you think we need to move in, somebody give me a thumbs down so I, or a thumbs up so I know that I have a consensus so staff can move forward. All right, all right, all right. There's my consensus. That's all I need. All I need. Thank you so much. Okay, so we will leave this in so that we can, I almost called on you, Counselor Williams. I thought you had forgotten about us.
No, I haven't forgotten.
Keeping everybody on their.
The mayor has his hand up again.
Keeping everybody on their toes. Yes, sir.
Hand up again.
I see it. Yes, sir.
Are we, are we ready to discuss other CIPs that aren't on this list?
Um, let me get through these five. That way, if something else drops off, I'll, I'll know what funding we have available. And then yes. So we've talked about this water treatment plant. We know that we're going to be doing a little bit of work on that, and we will get that to a place where it provides that flexibility. I, I don't know that, I think you all have given us quite a bit of information. I think we have a good direction to go with this. So. I want to make sure that, I want to take the first one that is in your book, The Street Rehab. This is a. This is a $1.9 million, $1,977,000. This is to do overlay of 11 streets, micro surface of approximately 25 streets, fog seal, three streets. I want to get a consensus, are we keeping this in the CIP? I've got three, four, five. All right. Counselor Williams, where are you? You say yes? Okay. Well, I got a consensus on that one. All right, let's move on to the next one. This is talking about Sunset Park. This is keeping in mind that we would bring to you the bathroom, the road, possibly a playground equipment in this year. So that is not what is included in this total funding of 407,000. That is in 2122 and that deals with making sure that we meet the requirements of our Counselor Prince, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I, I actually have a question because as I read the sheet that's in the book on page 216 in my book, it is not saying what I'm hearing you say. What I read in here is that the FY22 number of 407 is specifically for the construction of eastern access roadway and 32,000 for park amenities. And I think you're saying differently.
Yeah, my apologies. You're absolutely correct. I gave you the wrong fiscal year. Yes. Now.
So, so the project for this year that's being proposed, the vast majority of that spending is for the roadway.
The bathrooms are in that spending for this year and the playground equipment are in that spending. What is not in this is that roadway. And then in the following year, you'll see in, by 2223, we have to have all the other amenities, which are all those lovely playground, I mean, sporting amenities that were put forward. This next year in 2122, we would also be doing some picnic tables, some benches and some signs. Because we have to have something in a fiscal year that deals with the project grant. So I can't just do the road in F12122. I have to do something that is an eligibility, eligible project for the grant and those benches, picnic tables and signs would actually be a part of that eligibility.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm really confused at this point.
I don't make the confusion.
What, what the, the book says is FY22, which is calendar 2122, the budget we're working on right now, the book specifically says $375,000 for the roadway and 32,000 for park amenities. So if that's not right.
Keep reading, where it says park amen, such as benches.
Yep, yep.
Tables and signs.
Okay.
That is the piece that I was speaking of. That is a piece of that eligibility for that grant.
That's great. I'm, I fully support that. What I thought, I heard you say is the bathrooms will be done, but the road will not be done. And what I'm reading here is the road will be done, doesn't say anything about the bathrooms and it does talk about the amenities, which I think we're agreeing we need.
So this year's budget, 2021 budget, bathrooms and a piece of children playground equipment. Next year's budget, 2122, the roadway, benches, picnic tables, signs. Roadway is not a part of the grant. So the bathroom is not in 2122. We're going to try to get, it's about 250,000. We're going to try to get that done in this year's budget right now. So it does not come out of 2122. Does that help? Did that clear that up for you?
Sorry, I'm, I'm still struggling with the confusion. Maybe Mayor's trying to jump in, maybe he can help me.
And I think it's a semantics issue, to be honest with you. I think when Counselor Prince, I apologize, Mayor, you go ahead, you're on, your mic's on, now go ahead.
No, yeah, I think what the confusion is, is the fiscal year that we're talking about, the bathrooms and the bathrooms and that one piece of playground is slated for the FY2021, the one we're currently working under. When you're looking at, when you're looking at that page that says 2122, the bathrooms are not included in that because that's going to happen this year. So the next year is the street and the other, the other thing. So yeah, the bathrooms will be done prior to this budget that we're talking about.
Exactly. And like I said, that is because we do not want to take that funding out of next year's expenditures so that we make sure we have enough to meet the eligibility for the grant.
And, and I'm going to jump in here for just a second on the semantics issue. I was confused, like Counselor Prince was, but the bottom line is, the budget that we're evaluating right now isn't the 2021 budget, it's the 2122 budget. And the roadway will be accomplished in the 2122 budget CIP program if we decide we're going to move forward with the items that are here. And I think that's what was being, was confusing. But I think we're all on the same page. I see some smiles and thumbs up, so.
Well, it didn't help that I gave the wrong fiscal year in the beginning, so my apologies. What we are also trying to do is, I, I went back and listened to a lot of the council meetings in regards to Sunset Park. Oh my goodness, where there's some conversations. What was very specific is we need to accomplish something, we want to see something accomplished, we want those bathrooms done and the roadway were of importance. This is how we have figured out how we can do those things that you were specific on to, to staff. Not only are we going to do those things, you see which year they're going to be done and you can see that we're funding them. And the final thing that was brought out during the council meetings is making sure that we meet the intent of that grant. Taking into consideration all those things, that's why we're doing the bathrooms this year in the current year. We've got the roadway and some of the items for the grant because you have to expend in order to be eligible for reimbursement in a fiscal year. And then we will finish up those amenities in the following fiscal year, 2223. So unless somebody has another question about that, I'm going to ask for consensus.
I'm good.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, sideways. I think, I got, all right, that's all I need. Perfect, perfect. And I can tell you, I'm pretty sure that Star is making some notes, but in case you see me trying to jot down, I want to make sure I get exactly what we're trying to accomplish. The next one is Project G-1 Public Works Operation. If you will recall, and I want to make sure that I've got all my, my notes here, but if you will recall, this is where we were talking about the water and wastewater plant expansions. There's 25,000, that is the only thing programmed in this coming up fiscal year, not current, the one you're proposing right now, to do a survey and a site analysis on that land that was purchased to house the public works operations, meaning all the people in public works. You will recall that site has the, I believe there's a house on it and some other things. This is for, you can't do, if you don't know like what you're dealing with, you don't know what you're going to do. This is, instead of us just barging in and doing something, this is $25,000 to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what can and cannot happen and whether or not anything needs, else needs to be added again. So we come back with a good budget number for the council. Counselor Williams, I see you.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but versus it just being public works operation, I thought that area also was going to be a, a green center.
You are correct. That is a piece of that.
So that needs to be part of the evaluation, how those two things can fit together, I would think.
In this, and we talk about department area parking, storage, equipment, and you want green center added to that.
Correct.
That's an easy fix, as long as I have a consensus. I, I've got a thumbs up, thumbs up. You've already told me, thumbs up, thumbs up. Man, we're rolling like a freight train here. Beautiful. All right. Our next one is the water line, Barquet to Bronco. In this fiscal year, project consists of adding approximately 3,000 feet of new 12-inch transmission pipe and abandoned portions of the older 8-inch pipe and will require boring under 14, 31, yeah. So this one, it has professional services of 56,000, that is professional services, engineering, design, those types of things. The construction is 816. So this is total project cost, 872. I want to point out on this project sheet, you don't have anything programmed for 2223, 2324. So this is the total cost of the project and it has been paying with water impact fees. So are there any questions in regards to what is specifically being done with this CIP? This is one of those that, you know, it's kind of the chicken or the egg, you gotta, you gotta do something. And this one is a short-lived, but will do a lot for the community. Counselor Prince?
I, I'm in support of this. I, I do want to comment though that I'm pretty sure by, from memory that in last year's budget, there was a water master plan, which I don't think was finished and has been published, and a water balance project, which I've not yet seen the results of. And so as we're talking about laying pipe around the city, to me, not having a clear overall plan and an overall published picture, and, and just a couple of days ago, I, I kind of responded to another note saying, I'd really like to see a sort of a schematic of where are all the plants and the water towers and the pipes and how big are the pipes? Because frankly, I, I have no idea how the city's laid out and it, it makes me pretty nervous. I think this probably is a good idea and I think it's, you know, it's contained to one year, it's a reasonable number, so I'm willing to support it, you know, get going on it. But I'm pretty uncomfortable as we continue to make these investments, not having the big picture.
I can appreciate that. And I do see your hand, Counselor Sullivan. I do want to respond and so Counselor Prince, please understand the schematics and those types of things when it comes to homeland security, they will not allow us to provide that information. It is a sensitive data. In other words, if somebody wanted to corrupt our water, all they would need to do is get that information in their hands. We don't even keep all that information in one place for that very reason. It goes against some of the ethics when it comes to keeping secure, those types of things. So I can appreciate needing the bigger picture and we will do a good job at giving you that when it comes to this water master plan that you were referring to. What we won't provide is specific schematics of our pipes and the, and the sizes and things like that, not because we don't want to, but because our job is to make sure we don't bring that unharmed risk to our community or, or to our infrastructure. So I can appreciate wanting to have the big picture. We will do our best to get you exactly what you need without compromising that. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. My only question, obviously, there's been a lot of talk tonight about the potential growth that we're going to have on the northern end town. And my only question is, is 12-inch big enough? Do we feel comfortable that the expansion that we're getting ready to do there will suffice for the future? Or are we going to go back here digging this up again at some point in the future, putting a 16-inch pipe in?
I can appreciate that question. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not the expert in that and don't presume to be. In my experience, and I was looking to see if Eric was on, I can't see him right now.
I think he's gone, yeah.
I think he is too, I just can't see him. Like, there he is. So I will let him chime in, but in my experience, I have not gone above a 12-inch in other communities. I don't know that that is to say that it can't go above a 12-inch, but I will tell you that the only, as high as I've seen of a pipe when it is being replaced from a smaller 6, 8-inch, you're going to, from a 6 or an 8 to a 12, you're almost doubling your capacity to go through the line. Eric, I'm going to ask you if there's anything you want to add to that.
Actually, would have preferred a 16-inch pipe there. But the reason why we're going with a smaller 12-inch pipe is because that's what we're connecting to at the Barquet and, and 1431. So that's one of the main reasons that it's a, it's a 12-inch pipe. In the future, what's going to happen is it will not be a required upsize, but in future, what's going to be needed as the city grows, well, it can be determined later on in the future, but as the city grows, there will be either additional water storage tanks at, on the side of the hill there or at the top of the airport to accommodate that growth. But as far as this transmission line is concerned, I believe for many, many years in the future, we won't need to do anything with it.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you all.
All right, I see that I got Counselor Weatherly back. I lost him for a moment. Is there a consensus on this CIP based on what we know right now?
Good to go.
Awesome, awesome. All right, we're getting very close. We've already talked about the water treatment plant and we have talked about the expansion. This next item is actually not about the expansion, but before you do the inspect, inspect, expansion, nothing like getting tongue-tied, you have to do the water, the raw water intake. So it's kind of, we're back to the chicken and the egg, which one do you do? If this is something that is of concern based on what we know, then, you know, that needs to be something that we as staff will discuss. But this is, the project consists of upgrading the barge and the pumps and the existing well system so it can remain a backup. This is the raw water intake. So this has, this is not the expansion. This is to upgrade that first water treatment plant for those types of things so that it can, you know, do what it needs to do. Now, the city recently retained that consultant that you know of and these are things that we're trying to find out what that best option would be. So is there concern in regards to this? And before I ask for additional questions, Eric, is there anything that you would like to add to this CIP project?
As you mentioned it earlier, this is on a chicken, egg, the egg with water plant one. So there's no point in, just for council's reference, if, you know, we only do this expansion if we're expanding water plant one.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the sheet on page 219 that describes this and what I'm seeing is in the 2122 budget, which is the one we're approving tonight or want to try and move forward with, all I see is 180,000 for professional services. The, the, of the 1.8 million or the 1.98 is 1.8 that gets spent the following year.
Yep.
So we're not approving that. The only thing we're approving is the 2122.
Correct.
You are correct. And that one cannot happen without the other. So one is the professional services to do some of that, that site surveying, geotech, all those things. Then in 2223, that's the 1.8. This is also a place where you could possibly use that ARPA, the American Rescue Plan funding. Remember, you've got 1.8 million that can only go for water sewer and broadband. We have a water sewer, this is specific to that infrastructure. This would be a strong eligible project. So that's why, that was another reason why we put it in this CIP project, because we have to be able to expend those by '24.
So I, just a couple of follow-up questions, if I might. Again, all of the money listed for 2122 is the 180 in professional services. is the 180 in professional services. Um, yet down below in the project details, it says, the final paragraph says, "This project consists of upgrading the barge and pumps. The existing well pump system will remain a backup." So are we analyzing the situation? Or are we actually changing out the barge and pumps in, in 21, 22?
We're analyzing it.
Okay.
So that 180 maybe has nothing to do with, it knows what has to happen. How do we get that done? The design, engineering of getting that done. What we're actually going to get done in the construction is in that 22 budget.
So, so here's my follow-up question, and that is, um, can we spend a little bit of time in, you know, next fiscal, or fiscal year, analyzing the situation and determine what really makes the most sense? Either WTP1 or WTP2? And then expend the money analyzing whichever situation comes out the winner? Because, because when we talked about massaging earlier, that's really what I had in mind. That we're going to look at it, we're going to debate it, and we're going to come up with a conclusion that, yep, water treatment plant one is the way to go. Or water treatment, treatment plant three is the way to go. And that's where we're going to go spend our money on analyzing. If we can't do that, I'm kind of like with Counselor Prince, I couldn't be in favor of moving forward in knowing that the only direction we have is WTP1. Uh, because I'm not convinced that that's the way to go.
Well, that's why I started this conversation when we got to this CIP. It's kind of a, we may have to do something else in regards to this because this was in an effort to get it done before the water, um, treatment plant one expansion. So I am, I'm hearing only from two thus far, but it sounds to me like there is a conversation that is going to go a little bit further about using this CIP as the one that talks about analyzing between the two in regards of which one would be the better of the two to expand. And Counselor Williams, I saw your hand, and then Counselor Prince, I know that you, um, Mayor doesn't have a thumb up yet, or a hand up. Yes, sir?
To how we did the expansion one, we, we could do the same thing on this and just have it say water treatment plant, raw water intake, so that it could apply to either one or three, depending on the data that we get moving forward. Correct?
I want to make sure from Eric Belay that, um, the raw water intake for water treatment plant one is that the same situation with water treatment plant three? In other words, could we do the same analysis on three that we're looking to do on one?
Uh, water treatment plant three does not, does not require major expansions, uh, actually. That's other than, doesn't really require a lot of engineering work. So I guess the short answer is no. So this is, uh, the $180,000 is survey and geotechnical, um, engineering design for expanding the raw water intake for plant one.
So, um, thank you for that. So what I am thinking would be, um, a good, not compromise, but I think would accomplish what we're trying to do here is that we take that water treatment plant number one that we are trying to make flexible for one and two, and we put these two CIP projects together to talk about the analysis between one and two to accomplish that. Which means that one of these CIP projects, it's going to go off of our CIP because we're going to put, we're going to merge the two into one. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It, it does, and just a correction, it's water treatment plant three. We, we did decommission two.
Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Prince?
Um, I, I, um, I would support that, that direction. Um, I, you know, having this just as a water treatment plant expansion project, uh, makes a lot of sense to me. And what we're seeing in the current proposal is if I add the two together, $805,000 for professional services, what I just heard from Mr. Belay is if the answer is plant three rather than plant one, the, uh, raw water intake is actually much easier to do and doesn't require as much professional services. So I think if we just budget $800,000 or 805 for professional services and call it the water treatment plant expansion project, um, for the, for the year, uh, then I would, I would be supportive of that. And if it ends up being easier than we expect and we come under budget, then nobody's going to cry about that.
Correct.
Nobody's going to cry about that, including me. All right, so I need a consensus from the council unless somebody would like to throw out another. All right, looks like everybody's there. I didn't see, there she is. All right, then we are going to merge those two projects. To accomplish this, we will put professional services somewhere in the realm of 800,000. All right, so this takes care of the current CIPs that we have. Mayor, you have a request for additional CIPs.
So I just have, uh, two things on my list, and they are not a priority, not really to be considered for this fiscal year. But the two things that I've seen are nowhere on the list in the next five years that I saw. Uh, I may be mistaken somewhere. But one is, um, library, city hall, municipal complex expansion. Uh, I know we have, uh, you know, tabled that, but we have a subcommittee out there that's looking into finding space for our employees, and we're looking at adding more. I just didn't see anything over the next five years that would accommodate uh, any kind of expansion of our municipal complex area. Um, so is that, did we just completely abandon that? Or am I missing it somewhere?
You're not missing it, and no, we have not abandoned it. It just means it wasn't funded for 21, 22. It doesn't mean that's why we're having this conversation. It doesn't mean that it can't. We just don't have a good number to put in there right now. Counselor Williams, would you like to respond to that? Being that you're the liaison for that?
Yes. One of the things that we're looking at from the committee standpoint is the short-term solution right now. So, uh, and we're trying to come up with the correct numbers and the correct opportunities that exist for the short term. Uh, once we complete that project, then we'll start looking at the longer term, uh, for the municipal complex. But right now, it, it seems like there's an immediate problem that needs to be addressed. And until we come up with the number that is required for that, it was not put into the CIP until we have that number.
Do we have a number anywhere for the short term, anywhere in the budget?
May I? Yes, Star.
Want to do anything in this fiscal year?
On the continuing projects for all of the CI projects that are ongoing, that we've currently got started, those are in the budget. If you'll look just a few pages above the five pretty pages that she's got there for the five year, those CIP, those are brand-new projects, but right in front of that is your regular CIP budget. And all those carryover budgets are, are, projects are listed there.
Oh, okay.
And, and just to clarify, I think what she's saying is we allocated 700 and something thousand in 2021. So that money should be there if we decide to move forward with things. We've got money allocated for that, right?
Yes, and it's rebudgeted. Just, just go backwards about two, three pages, and you'll see the regular CIP budget that looks like all the other budgets with all the line items, and those ongoing projects are all listed there.
Okay.
Page 210. I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, and my, and my second one, okay, let me look at the ongoing projects. We talked about, okay, town center development. The question is, we, we were looking at taking down all the telephone poles and going underground. Is that part of the town center development? Or where's, where's that at?
I don't have that as part, and Star, you can correct me. I don't think that is part of the town center development, even though we know that that is something that, um, has been, um, promoted, so to speak. I think that that, those utilities, I think we need to start with a conversation with the utility company about whether or not those can be taken underground and what that cost is, and whether or not they are going to be a partner with us in doing so.
So we, we did have that conversation, I will have to discuss it further, but, um, yeah, they definitely would put it. We have to do a lot of the, they would take the poles down, we have to dig the ditches, and then they, and put all the infrastructure in, and then they come back and connect it. It's basically the way that it works, but.
What type of infrastructure?
It, well, if, if I might, just one quick comment. If you look on page 211, underneath the, uh, 580-8266, um, about, I don't know, seven, eight down, there's municipal complex utilities, and it was previously budgeted for 105,499. So I think that money is there.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, of executing on that project when the time is appropriate, I believe.
Okay.
What exactly type of infrastructure were you speaking of, Mayor?
Oh, I'm not specific. There was, um, all the underground wiring, the installation of the actual boxes. Uh, I think we had to do pretty much all the work. All they did was disconnect, take the poles down, and then reconnect. Pretty much all they would do.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah, and we tried to get a community, um, development block grant to assist. Uh, that was not approved. So, um, I don't know, we can just, we can talk to them again, but, you know, they weren't going to do a whole lot.
All right, so we do have a little bit of funding, but I would definitely want more clarification because those boxes are something that they get in day in and day out if they have to deal with the infrastructure. So them requiring us to put those in, if we didn't put them in the right place when they needed to get into those boxes, that could be a real, a real concern in the future. So you and I definitely can have more conversation about that because I want to make sure that I get everything I need to so that we get a good cost analysis for this.
Okay, well, I just, I just didn't see them, you know, in the CIP, but now that Star and Kevin has pointed those out in the other portion of the budget, I'm, I'm good. Uh, we'll just have to discuss it moving forward.
Okay, they are continuing projects.
So that's the only two that I had.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Prince, you're the only one I see right now with their hand up.
Uh, thank you. A couple of, couple of questions. I wanted to clarify, um, so in, in the ongoing projects, this is page 209, uh, line item 8238, the SCADA improvements. I just want to confirm that this is the last. Are we going to get this for the 217,500 that's in here? Are we going to finally get this done in this fiscal year? And I think that's for Mr. Belay to, to answer.
I was going to say, I'd love to tell you I have the answer to that, but in my short tenure, I'm not sure I do. So, Mr. Belay, can you answer that?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor and Council, what we're going to do this coming fiscal year is we're going to go out for RFQs, and we'll bring a contract before council to, to take a look at. And that's going to get us much closer. One of the other things that we are asking is a full-time person that is, uh, trained in SCADA. So one of the things is like myself, trying to be a mechanic. And I'm good at changing the oil, and I can change a tire, maybe a light bulb, but that's pretty much it. So that's kind of the same thing on the SCADA. See us as city staff, there's so much we can do without that, uh, uh, professional background training. And we're relying on one contractor says one thing, the other contractor says the other thing. So we're trying to get the full-time person to hopefully come in and, uh, manage these contracts. As of right now, we're, uh, we are going to also go, we're going to bring a contractor in to, to take a look at this. And, uh, so we're going to, we're going, in short, we think we're going to resolve the problem, uh, but, uh, there's still going to be some money left over if we have any other issues left by the end of the year.
Okay, so what I hear is, to the best of your knowledge, this 217,500 that's in here is going to get us a completion on SCADA this year?
It's going to get us to a completion to resolve the issues that we've been having. So bring it back to what a normal SCADA system should look like.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. I'll look forward to that. Um, and, and then the other, um, thing that I want to actually throw out there for council feedback, you, we, we've got about $2 million in road improvements plus a 1.5, 1.6 million dollar street department budget. So we're putting about three and a half or a little more than that million dollars towards streets. Um, but nothing is going towards safety. Um, and so I would propose that we impose, you know, we put some amount towards street safety, and, you know, we'll task, uh, staff, maybe working with police department to come up with, what does that mean in terms of, are there some road improvements? Are there simply stop signs? Are there, you know, new signage? What do we need to do? Um, and I'll throw a number out there, you know, we've got, we've got $2 million in our, uh, in our capital budget here for street improvements. Maybe we can do, you know, 5% of that, $100,000 towards, uh, towards street improvements. Uh, but I think, uh, and, you know, maybe that number's too big, maybe it should be bigger, I don't know. But, uh, like I said, I'm just throwing something out there. I think this is a topic that we should put some money towards and provide direction. Uh, so I'm proposing for council feedback, we should provide a direction to the city manager to actually intentionally put some money and some effort towards improving street safety.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, uh, Tracy, currently, this past year, we use, we have a departmental budget. We have a contractual line item in there that, a lot of that does go towards street safety. For example, one of the things that we did recently is we put some guardrails along Lake Shore Boulevard and, and Park. So, um, those are some of the things that we've so far been handling it through our street department budget. But if, if there's something specific that you're concerned about, we can look at it, and we can just add it to the street department budget instead of trying to make it into a CIP item. CIP projects tend to be very specific, and they have a clear scope of work. So just, just food for thought there.
Yeah, that's good feedback, and I'll just comment since it was my, uh, my proposal. Uh, you know, I think there's some places along Boggy Ford that really need some attention. I think there's other places in the city that need some attention, uh, and certainly a police department would have some, some good feedback on that. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that the street department is just kind of taking care of some of that. I think there's opportunity for us to maybe direct a little more energy towards that.
Duly noted. Are there any other CIP projects that anybody would like to propose or discuss in regards to this adopted budget?
Not for this year. Not for this upcoming year.
So I'm taking it that we have a consensus on the items that we are going to be bringing forward. I think there were seven, it may be six now because we're combining two. That helps us move on to our next big decision. So if everybody is good with that, we'll move on and we'll go to our other considerations. How's that?
Okay.
Okay. So let me go make sure I get us back to the slides that I need. All right, so our other considerations. Um, keeping in mind that you have that 1.5 that's already in there. My other considerations, and we will take this one by one, a cost of living adjustment. I have a cost at 3% for the entire employees. I guess the question is, is this something you would like to consider? And if so, is it 3% or another percentage? We did not build the budget based on a COLA at all. I see Counselor, Mayor, oh, I just switched all up, didn't I? I saw Counselor Marion's hand.
Where'd your presentation go?
I, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. It decided to just leave me.
Oh.
Uh, thank you, Tracy, but I, I think I saw the mayor's hand up before mine. I don't mind, uh, Mayor, if you'd like to go first.
I appreciate you doing that because I can't see him right now because everything just went black. just went black.
Mayor.
Yeah, I have a, before, before we get to that, I have a couple, just a question. Our revenues, we were showing at 39 million, expenditures at 3.3 million, chose to be about $6 million difference. If I remember that made my notes correctly. But then when we get to the other considerations, we say we have about 1.8 million to consider for other considerations. Where's the other 4.2 million?
You have 1.8 in surplus and, hold on, let me make sure I give you the correct, or Star's going to chime in like shortly, in the general fund.
Mayor, I think that 39 million number was the amount of our budget last year. I don't believe it was the revenues being generated this year.
Well, okay, so it may, and it may be combined of all of our revenues and expenditures. And so I may just be misunderstanding that the 1.8 is in the general fund, the other 4.2 could be in utilities or something else. So I think I understand now.
Okay, because on your consolidated sheet, it will show you, and I'm not sure, I think it is, I'm looking at two different places right now. So on your consolidated sheet, it will show you the revenue by the actual funds altogether. I believe this is, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4. I want to give you a page number. You can see that on page 5 in your budget book. So it'll tell you the total revenue for the general fund, aviation, golf course, utility. That is the total revenue. That is not what is left over from the expenditures. So that 1.8 is what we are talking about as surplus after taking our O and M.
Okay. I got it. I'm clear. Alright, Chalane.
Thank you, Mayor. So Tracy, quick question. I think I heard someone earlier, it might have been Counsel Williams mentioning that the total for all of these was somewhere around 370,000 or something?
330,000.
330,000. Thank you. So what, if, if we were to approve all of these or some number of these, how would that impact that rate that you shared at the beginning?
Because we have that 1.8 surplus, that is what it's going to impact. It will not impact that rate. It will impact that surplus. Star, please chime in if you have any concerns about that. But I think we have built this on a budget that, remember, that 1.5 in employees and equipment, not all of that is going to be funded. So that 1.5 is funded off of that .6070. So even if we add 330, because there will be some things that are not funded, we can stick with the .6070 rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so now I'm confused. Is the 1.8 surplus, is that in addition to the 1.5?
Mayor, if you'll look at the consolidated statement section, that first, I think it's about 10 pages of the budget, the other considerations here on her chart, some of these are strictly general fund expenses and some of them are going to be split among the funds, like the cost of living, accidental death, those are going to go to both general and utility funds. So it's not strictly hitting general. The others, like the website, the donations down there, the compensation study, those would all be general fund. But each one of the funds and the departments as they're listed has the beginning balance, the revenue that has it, the expenses, and then at the very bottom, it'll show you the surplus. So that 1.8 that she was referencing is just general fund. But then you can scroll down and look at each of those departments and funds, they're each going to have a surplus. We don't have anybody operating in the negative and we're not using fund balance to balance any of them.
Okay, I'm just trying to do the math in my head, you know, if I add these $330,000 worth of other considerations, do I have to take something away from the 1.5 or can I do both?
No, the 1.5 there on those new positions and all the equipment is already in the budget. Those are the ones that she's going to talk to you all about separately of which ones are going to stay in or not, or she's going to make that decision and bring it back to you with her justification or whatever. So that 1.5 is already assumed and in your budget. It's the other things listed on that chart that are not in the budget that we're asking for permission to either add or change or do what with, as y'all so direct. But it'll be split over more than once. So you can't just take it off on the 1.8 general fund because it's not all general fund expenses. Pieces of it will come from whichever fund it belongs to.
Okay, so if we change cost of living to 4%, which would be 70,000 additional, we'd be at like 280. Now we're looking at $400,000 worth of other considerations. Can we, can we do that and still keep the 1.5? Or do I have to come up with 70,000 out of that 1.5?
You do not have to come up with anything. If you, as a counsel, give us a consensus that you would like a 4% COLA, Star and I and the rest of staff will have conversations since it does span against the general fund, the enterprise funds, because those COLAs include employees in the utility fund and those other funds. So it doesn't all come, like she said, out of the general fund. We will make sure that those things get taken care of in the budget by virtue of some of the decisions with the equipment and the employees because that is a large chunk. Salaries are our biggest chunk. So, the only thing I would ask that Counsel keep in mind as you make this decision is, this is something that is not a one time. So in other words, this 4% COLA is something that will go forward as in what our employees are making a salary in the following year. So we sustain that. That's not an issue. I just want to make sure that the Counsel understands that. It's not like it comes and then it goes away. I think I saw Counsel Sullivan and then Williams.
Thank you. And just to put a fine point on the, what you just said, yes, they'll get a cost of living adjustment of 3% this year and that salary will remain the same next year and the year after. So, but I just want to make sure you're, what you're not saying is there's an automatic 3% raise every year.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. And then the only other question that I had was, does it make sense to do this adjustment, given the fact that, you know, four lines down or whatever, you're asking for a compensation study, which is going to tell us how we're paying our employees and if we're paying them appropriately. Would we not want to wait until after we've done the compensation study before we jump in on COLAs? Just help me understand that a little bit.
Great question, and I'm really glad that you asked that. So a COLA is cost of living in today's time. In other words, gas prices go up, supplies go up, groceries go up. That is what a cost of living, it has, even though it is adding to their salaries, is not adding to their base salary that we hire individuals on. That compensation is related to the base salary that we give a certain amount of dollars for certifications, a certain amount of dollars for experience, a certain amount of dollars for education. That is what the compensation study would speak to. So it will take in to account the benefits like health insurance, COLAs, things of that nature, and build that into the compensation. But one does not have to happen, or one does not have to wait because of the compensation study. That COLA is to help give the employees a little bit of relief for the cost of living that's happening now, not dealing specifically with where we are actually putting people in the criteria of our organization hierarchy and their pay scales. And that is what the compensation would deal with.
And I think I understand that a little bit better now, as far as what that compensation study will do. I still just have a little bit of a concern of ready, what it was, it's ready, fire, aim or whatever. You just rush into the COLA and does that cause some of our folks, not all of them, but some of them to then be, not be within the boundaries that eventually get defined by the compensation study? I don't know that it's a huge concern, but it is somewhat of a concern.
And I can appreciate the concern, but it will not. Again, we're going back to what we're asking them as being credentialed for their job responsibilities, not based on what is the norm in municipal government, making sure that, you know, as municipal government employees, they cannot go out and catch that extra dollar as far as some of the increases that the private entities give, like if you make a certain number of sales or if you sell a certain number of widgets or those things. They pretty much are based on what they're, what they're doing in today's world as far as their jobs. That COLA just gives them the opportunity to stay whole with all the other things that are happening. And of course, it's not going to make them completely whole. It would just make them whole on, we've seen an increase in fuel lately. They too are seeing an increase in the grocery store because of the drought and produce and those types of things. So this is just to help ease that burden out, not to change their pay scale. The compensation will deal with their pay scale. Counsel Williams?
Yes, you know, Mayor keeps on referring to that 1.5. That's, that's already in the plan. So I'm, I'm not even looking at that section as, I figure you'll discuss that section later with us. As far as the cost of living adjustment, the 39 years that I've worked for, all the companies I've worked for, there's always been a cost of living increase that has been included in my pay based on the conditions of the country. And it's ranged from 3% to 5%. So the 3% is not a bad, if, if, if the mayor wants to take it to 4, that wouldn't be bad either. The compensation study, I'm assuming, would determine if the salaries that the employees have currently are in line. It also would look at helping with merit increases and that kind of stuff, I'm assuming.
You are correct.
Okay. Because, because there's nothing on this page that deals with merit increases.
Exactly. You are correct.
You're waiting to analyze it and do your compensation study and then determine how to proceed forward. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, I see your microphone open.
I have to leave.
That means tag, you're it, Arch.
Mr. Weatherly, yes, he's in the.
I, yes, he does. He's all the way at the bottom. Counselor Weatherly?
Couple of things. The cost of living adjustment, I think, is appropriate 3%. I don't really think we need to increase that because the, the actual increase in cost of living has not been all that great, although it's probably more here as far as housing than other areas. The compensation study, I've been involved in four of those and every time, there has been adjustment that's had to take place, but nobody that I know of got any kind of big shuffle in their salary or their compensation because of compensation study. It had a lot more to do with balancing things. A few people got some more money, but the big thing was how much was paid to the next person that came in. And so I, I think all that's good. Do we have any idea what key plug of Vista Beautiful, what's the $15,000 for?
Let me, I will speak to that. Let me get past this one and, and see if I can get a consensus and then we'll take these one at a time. Is that okay with you, Counselor Weatherly?
That's fine.
Perfect. I saw Counsel Prance and then Counsel Marion. I want you to know that I'm seeing you. So don't worry about it. Sit there with your hands up.
I'm going to suggest, and you can, you can go with this or take them one at a time. I'm going to suggest that we bundle cost of living at 3%, the accidental death and dismemberment, which is a great bargain for, you know, an increase there, and the compensation study, and just approve all three of those, you know. So I think, you know, we've had a good discussion on, on all of that. And so I'm, I'm ready to approve all three and they feel like they're tied together enough that we may be able to just knock them out all pretty quickly. So that's, that's my, my feedback if you want to try it that way.
Sounds good to me.
I appreciate that feedback. Counsel Marion?
I, I just had a clarifying question. I think you said earlier on at the beginning of this meeting that, so merit pay, I did see throughout the budget documents. I also saw longevity pay and I also saw rewards program in many cases throughout the budget document. Those are in addition to the cost of living adjustment that, that you're asking us to consider here, right? Now, I certainly understand that not everyone gets merit or makes merit. That's not the intent of merit pay, nor should everyone make merit pay. So, I have two questions. Well, one question, one comment. At the state level, I can tell you, we haven't received a cost of living adjustment in five years. So a 3% cost of living adjustment in any single year to me seems pretty generous, considering that those of us who work at the state haven't gotten one in a long time, at all. The question I have is, if, if someone on the staff could provide some sort of an estimate as to what percentage of staff in general you think don't make merit in any given year, that would be helpful for me.
I can appreciate that question. I don't have any merit. The merit that you're seeing throughout the budget document is based on the previous years and this current year that we're in. Merit is not in the budget that is coming up. I did not put that in until we do the compensation study so that I have good data to base that on. So as far as this budget coming up, it is not included in there. It is a past benefit that they have had with the merit. So as far as, like you were saying, what is it that we actually value with that, with that merit pay and what that difference would be, would be something that we would discuss during that compensation. We can still get you an, an average of people who get the merit pay, but it's not a part of this budget discussion because it's not included in it. Does that help?
It, it does. But there were, unless I read it wrong, there were rewards, there was rewards program and there was longevity pay, right? Those are still continuing on into this budget cycle regardless of the compensation study.
Yes. Longevity is given as a, that is kind of like a, thank you so much for staying with our organization and giving us institutional knowledge the more years you're here. So we pay for that. The rewards is something that we do as a morale or can be associated with some, something specific in each one of those budgets, but they do not have anything to do with the compensation. It might be considered as a benefit. They will add in that longevity when they're talking about the compensation, but it's not something that would be yes or no as far as this budget. We have kept those in there.
But they're part of salary, right?
Chalane, I'll clarify for you. Those are two items that we generally give out around Christmas time. The longevity is $25 per year, up to a $500 max. Once you hit $500, if you stay 10 more years, you still get the $500. And the, the other one, the rewards is a And the, the other one, the rewards is a flat $300 per employee. And they, we try to time it where it's about the week before Christmas so that folks have a little bit more in their pockets to, to do whatever they want to through the Christmas season.
Thank you for that clarification, Sarah.
But you're also saying that there will not be any other merit increases for the year? That would just say?
Correct. We didn't, we didn't, I was doing that part of the budget and I did not want to assume. I was letting that be the city manager's decision and councils. So I did not put in merit or COLA, either one, because everybody that comes in as a manager has their own idea of how they want to handle that section. Some do all COLA, some wanted to do only merit, some do a split. Josh did it two or three different ways with a split, different views. So I left totally blank for this discussion.
Okay. Thank you. I'm good.
So I, I have heard feedback. Is there any more feedback in regards to, right now, we're talking about the cost of living and there was a suggestion to include the ADD in the compensation study?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I've got three.
Yeah, me too.
Four, five. Now I have the mayor and I've got more consensus to move forward with those three. So that is the way we will put those in the budget. Now, I want to make sure I'm putting them in the budget at 3% COLA.
3% COLA.
Okay. I don't see anybody shaking their head no or yelling at me. Okay. Those, those are the decisions. All right, so we've-
Study not to exceed 60,000.
Yep. That's exactly what we will put.
Got it.
So now we're down to the bottom, the new website. That is at 40,000.
It needs help.
Counselor Prince?
I'm, I'm big time in favor of this. I want to make a suggestion. If I understand it right, in the budget already, there's a line item of, I think it's 50, roughly $50,000 for the city web app, if I understand it correctly, and that's in the Economic Development Department. If I'm interpreting that correctly, I would suggest we kill that city app. I personally think it's useless. I use it and I think it's really poorly done and I don't want to spend another $50,000 on it. I'd much rather move that money out to making the website good. So in my mind, we can do a straight switch and, and not spend any more money, but put it to better use.
Are you, are you talking about the mobile app? Or what app are you talking about?
Yes, I think it is the mobile app, the city mobile app. In some cases, so I will give some information, in some cases, whoever actually does design our website, oftentimes they will promote the ability to be able to use our website mobile, so it functions as an app function at the same time.
Yes, thank you. And I'll add to my comments. I think money spent to make our website much more mobile friendly is money better spent than trying to have a standalone.
Counselor Sullivan?
I would echo those comments about the app. I downloaded it and very rarely the users, just, I didn't find it very useful. But the real question that I was going to ask, this is a continuing issue with the website. I mean, we went through this just a few years ago and, and we dedicated money to redesign it and, and, you know, re-push it out and, and people still aren't. So my only question is, how do we know we're going to go spend another 40 grand and, and everybody's going to be happy?
Well, you know as well as I do, you cannot make everybody happy. I think in three years, there have been a lot of things that have changed in the world of websites. For my computer guru, Counselor Prince, it is every about three to four years that you actually look at your website for redesign. It is not something that is going to last you a long time because more and more and more things come out as functions that can be built into your website. So we did this a couple of years ago. Doing it again, it's only going to make it better. Is it going to fix everything? No. Is it going to make everybody happy? No. Is it better than what we have? Probably.
Well, the only comment I would make is, is that I, I hear what you're saying. Companies do it all the time. And quite frankly, I think it irritates people just as much as it helps them in that just as they learn how to do something, it gets changed and you got to relearn how to do it. So all I'm saying is tread lightly on this one. I understand that people have frustrations with the website. But the bottom line is, is once you learn how to use it and you can be functional with it, going and changing it again isn't going to help things. Just my opinion.
And I appreciate that. So they actually take that into account when they do a website design. What features can they keep consistent and what they can change now? Will it look a little bit different? Yes. Will you be able to find some things still under the same dropdown? So when you transition from an old to a new website design, there will be things that are going to still be in the same places because we ask them to do that for that continuity. But there are going to be opportunities to actually put more information like FAQs, like frequently asked questions and, and certain things like that. And some, you know, when we have projects, to have a project page where we can build GIS into it so somebody can go and see marks on a map that says that there's construction going in these areas. Things like that can actually go into a website design so that we make it more functional for the residents and staff as well. It really becomes a resource tool. So those things would be new things that we would be putting in a website. Things we don't have right now. Counselor Williams?
Yeah, one of the things that needs to go into a new website that would be very helpful is the ability to be able to expand that website when needed. And right now, it's very difficult to expand our website. So if we're going to do a new website, I would like to know that the city has the function that they could add something into the current website without having to redesign the whole website every time.
I can appreciate that.
Well, and it, it depends on your design. If this new one is based on a content management system where all employees have to do is go in and put some information behind the scenes and it gets reflected, that's one thing. But if it's redesigned and we got to have someone with those particular skillsets make any changes to it, we're in no better position.
Those are all things that we would actually have a discussion if this gets funded. We would put together what we call an end user group. So the people that are actually using it and staff who have to put information in. And then we would actually have some conversations during some work sessions with the council as to their wants, their needs and their must haves. So that when we sit down with the vendors of these websites, we can have a good full picture of what we want to accomplish so we get the product that we're all talking about.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, because right, right now, the website is set up on a four-year, you can redesign it on a four-year basis. Maybe it needs to be a two-year basis instead of a four-year basis. I just think we need to explore all the different options we have. And if we need to spend a little bit more money to give us the flexibility to change it up more often, then that might be an added plus.
So I'm hearing a consensus from the council in regards to having this new website conversation. Is this something that there is a desire to keep input in this budget? Do I have a thumbs up? I get a thumbs up, thumbs up.
Yeah, I'm good.
My, my feedback is my thumbs up would be contingent on us taking money away from the app and shutting that down to spend it here.
We can actually evaluate that. The only way I can evaluate that is through those vendors when we're talking to them. So we will keep that in consideration, whether or not they can give us a mobile capability. I personally would not select somebody if they cannot give me a mobile ability because it doesn't help us.
That's a great answer. Use your discretion and I'll put my thumb up.
I think I've got a majority. Okay. I do have a majority.
Tracy?
Yes, yes, sir.
The only thing that I would add to what was just said is you were talking about putting the committee together to look at it and evaluate it. Can we please make sure that we have some people that are like myself, pretty computer literate in that? So that what we come up with is something that a large part of our population can use. Right now, I get on our current site, there's a whole bunch of it. I don't even have any idea how to get into. They keep saying it's on, it's on the web, it's in our site. And I go looking for it and cannot find it. So we need to have some people on there that are not quite as computer savvy as some of our younger population. Make sure that everybody gets covered.
You are absolutely correct. And that is something that we do when we're actually talking to those vendors. I have had the fortune and the disfortune of having to do this on three occasions. And so one of the things that user-friendly to all that are using the website is something that we talk about ad nauseam when we're doing this, just to make sure that where we're putting information, it makes sense to the majority, not just one specific department. So in other words, we may end up having redirects in several different areas just to make sure that if one person goes and looks for a piece of information over on this side and somebody else goes and looks for a piece of information on this side, they still get to the same place. So, and that helps a lot with the situation that you're talking about, Counselor Weatherly, is that if you don't know what you're looking for, you still want to be able to get there with ease. So that deals with the search and making sure that the keywords that are going in, that we don't deal with one keyword, that we pick several of those keywords, things of that nature. So that is what we've been looking for from a vendor.
Sounds wonderful.
I see that the mayor has returned. So we were talking about the, see, I actually saw this time. You didn't have to wait at me. So we were talking about the new website. There is a consensus to do funding for this new website. I just want to make sure that, okay, that I'm, that I'm not leaving somebody out for a consensus. All right, then I, I have my marching orders and my directive in regards to that. All right, this brings us to the last three, which we were talking about. So I've got two considerations that have been put out there. One, to do a cost specific for all nonprofit organizations or to take each one of these one by one and ask them to come and make a presentation in regards to their funding. So I'm going to ask somebody, I know that Counselor Weatherly, you asked about this, Keep Log of Vista Beautiful. And I gave Star my letter of consideration and we'll see if I have it in my stuff here. I may have been smart enough to make a copy for myself. But they are, this is to help out with some of the additional medians that they are, are looking to do specifically a couple of places near the Triangle and that is down on Dawn, at the end of Dawn, at the roundabout. They have been putting in quite a bit, using R5000 and putting in quite a bit for some of the construction and renovations that they're doing on planters. And so they associated this cost with some of those projects that they have going on. I know that that's not real specific to you, but I'm looking, I don't want to, I don't want to lose y'all looking for the specific email. So while I'm looking, because you, you can see there, while I'm looking, is there something else that you have a question about?
Yeah, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
Keep Log of Vista Beautiful does a great job and they work very diligently and hard. I don't have a problem in establishing a higher budget for them, but I do require that they, each project that they do, they bring to the city and we evaluate that project and move forward from there. I don't want to just give them the $15,000 carte blanche, you know? I think, I think we need to weigh the projects out and then just go from there. But if you wanted to set up a higher number for them to be able to think in a larger scale and try to bring us different projects that make sense for the city, that would be an added plus.
And if I might, so I'm the unofficial liaison to the KLVB and I've been to the, all the meetings over the last several months. And they had talked about potentially trying to get some more money from the city as part of the budget. And, and I told them, if you, you want additional money, if you'll, you give me the justification for it, I'll certainly bring it forward to council. I've not seen anything from them. But I can tell you that there's certainly interest in adding to the, the traffic circle, Bowden Point. There's the new place that they're going to beautify, I think their official name is going to be Windchime Point. That's at, you know, Bogey and Lowman. So bottom line is, and of course, they'll continue their maintenance of the other areas like the water tower at Santa Monica and over by the pool and, and probably get involved with Sunset Park and so forth. So bottom line is, I, I would certainly be in favor of upping their, the amount. And, but I'm, I'm with Dave. I think we ought to see some detailed requests from them as far as how they would use it and, and then proceed from there.
So I've, and I appreciate that. So I have pulled up the email just so I didn't want to give any false data. This would be to further enhance current adopted street locations as well as pursue larger projects currently out of their reach. A list of some, but not including all, would be further enhance the Dawn Drive traffic circle that I was talking about, the cleanup in Three Triangle medians that are currently overgrown. Improve the general landscaping and curb appeal at Veterans Park, which they gave a diagram and a sketch. Conduct a renovation of the CVS Masonry Wall, which would include new backlight letters, removal of existing floodlights, renovation and installation of the sailboat removed from Dawn Point and new landscaping to bring color to the area. Enhancement to the Dawn Drive median area directly across from the elementary school. An additional power outlet outlets at Bowden Point that would accommodate Christmas decorations. Pursue discussing the current AT&amp;T boxes at Bowden Point with an appropriate wrap. So a lot of times the signal boxes will get wrapped with something that's a little bit more attractive than just a metal box. So those are the items in which they were requesting the funding, if that helps.
That's everything that I wanted to hear. With that information, is $15,000 enough? Do we need to give them more? I mean, they work like crazy. I, I don't have any problem with giving these people a good amount of money. I just want to know what they're going to do.
Well, they only asked me for $15,000, so that's what I put in the, in the proposal.
And, and again, I, I don't, I don't mind giving them the $15,000. What I'd like to know is when they're working on one specific area and they come with what they think should happen in that area, that they share with us or with the city manager, what they're thinking about doing. And then in certain cases, we might want to expand that area even further than what they're thinking about. So I just don't want them to be blindsided and say, okay, we're going to do this. But the, the city would have liked to make it even bigger and nicer, but they weren't given the opportunity to help Keep Log of Vista Beautiful do it exactly the right way. You see what I'm saying? I mean?
Yep. I, I hear you. 110%. I know that Mayor Protim?
Yes, I'd like to suggest that we consider possibly having a set aside rather than just, you know, giving them 5,000 or 15,000. Say have 20,000 set aside for their use where they come forward with a project and give us an idea of what, what that entails in terms of the cost and, and then double the money out in that fashion.
Right. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I didn't hear that.
Counselor Prince?
I, I appreciate the sentiment. I, I do want to kind of maybe suggest swinging the pendulum back just a little bit from that. This group of folks has been doing a fantastic job of using money wisely, recruiting new people to go. I think, you know, for every dollar we spend, we're probably- I think, you know, for every dollar we spend, we're probably getting $10 worth of value beautifying the city in terms of labor. And, and so I, I think they're doing a nice job already. So while I think I would appreciate them coming into council and showing us their plans, I don't want it to turn into a city council is doing a design review on their, all of their designs. Number one, I think that's not the best use of council time. And number two, I think these, these folks can do a pretty good job without us. So, you know, maybe if we can just turn it back a little bit where it's not, we're approving every single individual project, but we have awareness of what their overall master plan is. I personally think that's, that's plenty of oversight for the city, and I'm, I'm very supportive of the $15,000 level.
Well, Paul, again, I wasn't saying that they had to come to council. I was just saying that they communicate with the city manager to determine, you know, they just keep the city manager informed of what their plan is. And if at certain, at some point in time, we need to add into making it larger, we're able to do, that's all I'm saying.
That's great. That's great. I like that idea. So if we can kind of defer to the city manager to, to run the project with them and say, the budget is $15,000, go help KLVB do great stuff. I'm, I'm all for it.
Right. I, I don't think it needs to come to council. You know, that takes up too much of their time and takes up too much of our time.
Yeah.
So I, I can tell you that Chris Mobley is on as well. He is the direct liaison with the Keep Lago Vista Beautiful group. He will keep me in touch with what is going on. I see them on Fridays when I'm up here. They're already taking care of some things around here. And so they know how to get in touch with me, but I would like for them not to jump over him so that when he has, that way he can bring those things to me and we can discuss how we can take those forward. And then I can share that information with the council when we have our meetings.
Got it.
Councilor Marion, you had your hand up. Is there something you wanted to add to that?
Not, not really. I think it's been summed up pretty nicely. I don't have a, an issue with the increase in their requests. And I think what they provided to you and you read from the email really gives a good idea of what it is they're planning to do with, with the additional funds. So thank you.
Absolutely. Mayor, do you have it? Did I lose him again?
He waved a little while ago. I think he had to go off on a call.
Okay. Any other council members have any other input on this? Nope. Darcy, I saw that your hand is up.
Yeah, yes. Hold on. Hi, thank you. City Manager Tracy. Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I heard a bunch echoing. Sorry. My question would be that, yes, KBLB does great things for Lago Vista. But I'm also on Parks and Golf and a couple other committees. And since KBLB is, they used to have their meetings online, but they don't anymore. So they're not actually in the Open Meetings Act and, and if they're acting as a 501(c), I would like to know if their meetings, because I would like to know as a taxpayer, I'm sorry, also as a taxpayer, when we hand them money, where that money is going and that the, the public actually has a little bit of say also in what, what we would like to be seen done without having to join their group. You know, like I have a bad back. I cannot do manual labor like that. So I cannot join them. I would love that, but I can't. But as a taxpayer, I would also like to know, like I live on Dawn right here where this water, not water sculpture went in. And I know that the city last year gave them $25,000 for that, but I also know that the city worked their butts off on that land because I watched them rip out all the stuff. And I would like to know that amount goes on to whatever the bill is. So I would just like some type of receipts or something to show what the taxpayers get when we give the money to KBLB. Thank you.
I appreciate that feedback. Mr. Roberts, I thought I saw your hand up as well.
Thank you, Tracy. I've, I've got several things that are kind of addressed, that I'd like to address, but I think it'd be more appropriate perhaps until, wait until you finish going through everything else on your list. Thank you.
Tracy, if I might, just, Darcy, the KLVB is not an official city committee. They're independent, and so they don't have to follow the open meetings law or whatever. But quite frankly, their meetings are open and even if you're not a member, they'd be happy to have you there. So if you want to join them, just if nothing else to joke, go to the meetings, they'd be happy to have you.
All right. I need a consensus from the council. From what I heard.
I'm good.
I, I, I've got a yes and a yes and a yes. I got a nod and a yes. And a yes. Okay. All right. Well, then I have my, my directive. The la, the last two are, I believe, small but mighty for what they're trying to get accomplished. Cox Springs School Renovation Society, this is to help them. They're trying to raise money to move and renovate that school that started in Lago Vista. That is what their project is. They're asking for support for it. They did not give us an amount. I think that Star and I were both assuming probably somewhere in the 2,500 range. But that is not what, they did not ask. They just asked that we consider it for any type of funding. So I, I leave that open to the council as a consideration. I have no one speaking up.
I wouldn't go any higher than the 2,500.
I, I was just going to suggest doing something similar to Dark Skies, give them both 2,000.
2,000.
I, I would go along with the 2,000. I wish that they had given us some number. It's so much easier to, to come up with something if they tell you what they want, rather than just give us some money. So, but I, I would go along with 2,000.
So do I have a consensus for 2,000 for the Cox school building? I got thumbs, thumbs. I got an in-between thumbs. All right, there's a consensus. Okay. And the final is the Dark Skies Association. They're requesting 2,000. And this is to help give them support. They're trying to get something started as far as getting us recognized and certified as the Dark Skies. That comes with some expenses. But it would be a recognition for Lago Vista specifically. And if you're not aware, they have got some events that they're looking forward to in the coming, like, years, one being when we have another eclipse and how that will actually affect Lago Vista and them providing some events for that as well. I think I hit everything, Councilor Marion, that they were looking for in response to that 2,000. Did I leave out anything?
Thank you, Tracy. So, yes, so I'm the, the, like KLVB, the unofficial city council liaison. So there's several things. There's currently a website that's been started for Lago Vista Starry Skies. That website, of course, comes with a cost, a monthly cost, as of right now, the committee members are paying out of their pocket for the domain name, website maintenance, and to pay for Zoom meetings because the, many of the meetings for Lago Vista Starry Skies are happening via Zoom. And then there's also the International Dark Sky Association application fee, which is $250 in and of itself that has to be paid here in the very near future. And soon, there's going to be an event at the library, and so the committee is looking to purchase a banner for that event as well. So there's a number of things that the Dark Skies Committee is currently working on and will be working toward in the future, including some events around the eclipse coming in 2024. So thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
I'm fine with the $2,000.
Yeah, I'm sitting here.
I'm seeing a consensus. Okay. All right. So I, we have gone through all the other considerations. We've gone through the CIPs. I appreciate everybody hanging with me. I think we've done this in a pretty quick fashion. Considering, the only thing I want to make absolutely sure is based on the tax rate.
Yep.
We have done this based on a .6070. I need a consensus from the council as to that tax rate, and I see Councilor Prince's hand up. I can't hear you.
Paul, we can't hear you. Your microphone is green, shows green, but we couldn't hear you. No, still can't hear you.
Still can't hear you.
Oh, the gremlins.
You may want to get out and come back in. Yeah, he'll be back.
All right. Is there anybody? Any other council members that want to speak to any of those rates that we're proposing? Actually, we're proposing one. Is there any other consideration that you would like?
Oh, I, I did have a question. So when we talked about this last year, when Senate Bill 2, you know, kind of first went into effect, Mayor had talked about, we didn't know what the ultimate impact was going to be of this law. And if we were going to get into a death spiral where, you know, as we go down with the, the tax rate every year because of the way the law was implemented, we just kind of keep spiraling down further and further. Has there been any analysis done as to whether or not we have the potential to get into that kind of situation?
You know, that is a six one-way, half a dozen the next kind of question. And I say that because we're going to, we're going to get into a place where, as we go down on this tax rate and we have more housing coming in, that circumstance that I was talking about earlier, where we're not the problem that was trying to be fixed with this house bill, we are the exception to it, yet we are going to be the ones that are really impacted. So we're bringing the rate down. We're going to have an increase in revenue. We're going to be in that same situation next year, more than likely, and could be for many years. So that spiral is more like a balance act of how we do that because that, that rate is going to continue to go down because we're going to continue to have an increase as far as we see the trend right now.
Well, and, and I just want to clarify something. The, the rate has to go down because property values for existing properties are going up. It's not because we're adding new homes. Because that's not, that's treated separately. It's because property values of existing homes continue to go up.
That's true. But we also get extra revenue because the house tops are coming in. So that helps with that extra revenue because they're coming in and they're helping pay for the infrastructure and they're helping to pay for the water and they're helping to pay for the roads based on those things. So they're added to the property tax every year with that addition. So that is an addition to the property tax along with the appraisals going up.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. And I think Councilor Prince is back.
I am back. Can, can you hear me talking?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
For now.
There and I'm like, oh no. It sounded like we were still talking about the, the new revenue rate. I actually wanted to talk about the golf course budget. And so it sounds like we're wrapping up. So, you know, maybe this is the right time to do it. So in, in last year's budget, there was, I'm doing these numbers from memory, so roughly 1.2, I think it was 1.2 and a half million dollars total expenses. And then there was about almost exactly a $400,000 transfer from the city in order to make that balance. That was in the budget. What we've seen in reality is the spending currently is not on a trend to spend the full 1.25 or whatever it was. It looks to me like in the latest financial reports, the actual spending is going to come in at around 1 million. So the spending is quite a bit under the budget for last year, and the revenue is over the budget for last year. And amazingly, the golf course is about to break even for this year. Very, very close to breaking even, almost a million in revenue and a million in expenses, which is fantastic. In this budget, the proposal is to increase the expenses all the way to, I think it's 1.3 something, 1.36 maybe. And, and in order to do that, and by the way, the revenue is, the revenue projection is about 900,000. So that, that's driving a transfer from the city to the golf course. It's even larger than the city that was proposed last year. And I remember in last year's budget cycle, Mr. Sullivan actually kind of predicted the trend. This is before he and I were on council. He predicted the trend and said, he suggested as a citizen that we challenge the golf course to be a little more aggressive financially and only budget a transfer of $200,000. That's what I remember him saying last year. I think the same thing is absolutely appropriate this year. That rather than budgeting a transfer of 400-something thousand, 440, I think it is, I think a transfer of 200, maybe 240 is entirely appropriate. And then, you know, let the golf course manager come up with a revenue and expense mix that meets that. But I, personally, I think that, that there's a, there's a good couple hundred thousand dollars of, of fat in the existing budget for the golf course, and I, I think we ought to challenge it.
Thought I heard somebody else chiming in.
Yeah, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
One of the things, Paul, that you need to consider is there is nothing in the CIP to deal with irrigation of the golf course. And that's a major problem, and they've been having major issues with leaks and everything else. I somehow think that they're going to have to fix some of that solution to make it work correctly. So, I mean, this, this past year, we only used 280,000 that came out of the general fund. And, and we budgeted 399,000 for the year. I think you're going to see that trend still happen, but you, you want to have him have enough money to fix the irrigation because it is a major problem and it's costing public works a lot of time and effort. They just had a water main break, the main water line break, and they spent a lot of time out there trying to fix that. So I wouldn't want to reduce their budget. I, I would want them to increase their revenues. But I wouldn't take away from that at this time.
Let me just restate, because I think you made a very significant point, because in, in last year's budget, there was almost $200,000 in the CIP for the golf course. And in this year's CIP, there's zero for the golf course. So you're really saying the net spend is, is better, even though the operating budget is up slightly.
Correct.
Yeah.
You also need to keep into account that there is some salary savings right now for the golf course because they do not have all of their positions filled right now. So, and they need some of those positions filled, so they are trying to do things a little more out of the box. They're going to get some of those positions filled, which will take up some of that salary savings for this year and next year. And instead of putting a $2 million irrigation system in, they are working conservatively on trying to figure out where those leaks are. And they will possibly be changing out the sprinkler heads, which will assist with some of the watering that is taking place right now. Instead of redoing everything, this will be a, an upgrade to the sprinkler heads that we have, but there is a cost. And they're trying to get quotes right now in regards to that. Councilor Sullivan?
Oh, thank you. So I have kind of a philosophical question about our process here tonight. I had some questions as to Councilor Prince, as he just voiced about the golf course. And I kind of held off because I had the impression that tonight, our effort was to attempt to walk through and, and approve the, the, the tax rate to make the determination, are we going to go, have to go to the voters or not? But, but my understanding is, is that over the next, if, if we do go the direction of not having to go to the voters, we're going to have another six weeks to seven weeks to work through this process. And, and that we are going to circle back around in future budget workshops and have these types of conversations in subsequent meetings. Is that right? Is that wrong? Should we be raising these kinds of issues right now? Or was the intent that we do it at future meetings?
The intent right now was I needed some specific decisions to know what that tax rate is going to be because we have to put notice out there for those, those big ticket items. I think some of the questions that you are going to be asking have to deal with specific expenditures that, or costs that we have put in. Nine times out of 10, they won't go above the amount. You may be asking, why are we budgeting those at this? So worst case scenario is I have that amount in there right now in case the council comes back and says, we think that something needs to be scaled back. We can have those conversations. At least we'll know what the budget is and we'll know what the tax rate is and we know what the CIP is and the other considerations that we need to put in this budget to make it work.
So bottom line is, we will be circling back. We will have a future opportunity to, to speak on these items.
Yeah, thank, thank you. It's a great clarification, Mr. Sullivan, and I appreciate that. And so I, I will suggest withdrawing the subject of the golf course from the table tonight. And we'll pick that up along with probably many other things in subsequent meetings. And, and just for the record, I am in, in favor of the no new revenue rate of 6070.
I'll, I'll say I'm in favor of that as well.
I've got a
Me too.
consensus for 6070. Or is, so I've got one, two,
A five.
three, four, five, six. That's the majority. All right. So based on the information that I have and based on, let me go to this. So in order for us, if you would like to speak about further line items in the budget, we can have those conversations tomorrow night if necessary, if that is what the council would like to do. We can publish this, submit the no new revenue, so we can get that rate posted. It does not have to, and these other items do not have to be, you know, the line items do not have to be a part of that. The only thing is we have our last day to file our proposed budget on August 27th. So we do have a little bit of time to go through the rest of those items that you were speaking of. It does not necessarily have to be tomorrow.
Got it.
And I'm sure Star or Aaron will bop me and tell me otherwise if, if they would choose to have that conversation tonight.
I was just going to jump in and say, I don't know that we need to have the budget workshop tomorrow night. It seemed like that was necessary if we were needed to make additional decisions for the short-term stuff. I would recommend that maybe we don't have the one tomorrow night. But then if we subject, we, we schedule an additional budget workshop next week, the week after, so that we can have these line item discussions and get the budget ready for the August 27th date.
I'm in favor of that.
I don't know whether they'd have here or hurt that John don't want to spend that time with me. I'm going to go with happy.
There you go.
We have two other meetings with you this week, so you know.
Don't say it like that.
We're, we're just trying to not overdo it all at once, Tracy. We're trying to, you know, you know, spread it out just a little bit.
I don't want that brain power ruined on anything else. So I'm, I'm perfectly okay. So my marching orders and staffs, we are basing this on the same no, no new revenue rate that we have done. We are in good shape to get this published. We will schedule another meeting possibly next week because I know that Star and I want to make sure that we get this budget refined to the very details in plenty of time before August 27th. So we'll look at what the calendar is. We'll talk with Sandra and make sure that we can get things published and scheduled. So I believe that we have met our intent for everything that we needed. So I would like to turn the meeting back over to the Mayor Pro Tim. I do know, Mayor Pro Tim, that you had a citizen that wanted to speak on some other additional items. But I have all the things that I need from the council at this time.
Thank you. Who would that person be that wanted to speak?
Paul Roberts.
Roberts wanted to speak.
Okay, Mr. Roberts.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I didn't feel it appropriate to interrupt while you got in, asked to speak publicly on several of these items as, you know, this was primarily about setting the rate. So I just want to throw some, some questions out, maybe you guys contemplate going forward into the line item stuff. Regarding the website, what functionality is actually lacking that needs to be fixed? Does it really need to be fixed? I agree with Paul, scrap the app, reappropriate that money elsewhere. The, regarding the water plants, which water plant services where I'm at over here on the east side of Lago Vista? Three, okay. I see the hands up. Thank you for that. And is, is that? I just want to be sure that whatever happens with three, that it can support growth out in my area for, say, at least 500 homes in the near future. I think that we all know that this is an area of undeveloped property that a lot of people are looking at. Right now, there's a lot of activity on it. Just something to be considered of. Pardon me. Regarding the four full-time and two part-time employees, I think that was the correct number. Glad to see, I'm really glad to see that Roy is going to get some help and especially Aaron. They've both been in need of that for a long time. I would submit for y'all's consideration that perhaps Donna and Ally in Utility Department, they need, they could use some help as well upfront. They have to field a lot of, a lot, a lot of the phone calls that come in, people coming into the front door. It pulls them away from their jobs. Maybe they could use some help. Regarding cost of living increase of 3%, you know, the Federal Reserve targets a 2%, has a 2% inflation target. That's effectively been their, their stated mandate, which you see iterated in the minutes that come out regularly. I sent all of you at the beginning of this meeting when that, when, when Tracy was speaking to that, I emailed all of you the current five-year projections on inflation. And 3% is, is a little bit in excess of what they're expecting, which is 2.5%. I would submit, however, I'm not arguing against it. But I think if anything, a merit bonus is warranted in excess of what's proposed in light of how difficult city staff's work was during the first quarter of this year with COVID. Those guys were busting their butts, working really hard, and I think that they deserve a bonus. Hotel occupancy tax, you, Tracy, you mentioned a number that you apportioned to the occupancy taxes, the contribution amount to our city budget. Do you happen to recall that number off the top of your head?
That was under special funds. Give me a second. So it is comprised of all the special funds. So the hot fund is a piece of the special funds. And that special funds, special revenue funds was almost 4 million. So it's not all of the hot fund being there. That deals with some other ones as well.
I, I was a little surprised that I, I had no idea it was that much. I don't know if others on council, if, if, if individuals on councils were surprised by that number like I was, but that's a pretty big number.
I think it's a pretty small piece of that. Star should correct that if I'm looking at the right table, it's 100,000, 100,000 for hot revenue.
That 4 million is just all the special funds, not the hot fund specific. It is in that 4 million.
Thank you for that clarification. I recall conversations maybe a year or two ago about the city. You know, we require anybody who's renting their, renting or leasing their, their homes or their properties for VRB, of short-term rentals, that they're supposed to have a permit filed with the city. And I just wonder is, if there isn't more revenue to be captured there through perhaps stricter enforcement of that. Something to think about. And then when you guys get into the line item discussions, money for parks, I don't think we can get enough of that. We need, we need anchors in this city to keep people here, make them want to stay here. They need places to go that are local instead of into town. And money for trail system. And lastly, is there money allocated in the budget for special purpose land acquisition or the like? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anybody else? Okay, if there's nothing else to discuss, I call this meeting adjourned at 9:11.
Have a good evening.